A call to order, the meeting of October 9th, 2013, of the Planning Commission of the Town of Los Gatos. May we have a roll call, please?
Christian Seauk.
Here.
Christian O'Donnell.
Here.
Christian Talisfor.
Here.
Christian Bujua.
Here.
Christian Birch.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
And Chair Erickson.
Here, please stand and join Commissioner Birch in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos and the Planning Commission strongly encourages active participation on the part of the public in all of the deliberations of the town, and in particular, the Planning Commission encourages participation of the public in the deliberations of the commission. There are several ways in which the public can participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. First is, one can provide written comments and feedback to the commission on agenda items prior to the meetings. That allows the staff to incorporate them in the staff report and get them to the commission beforehand. There are two opportunities at meetings, as there are this evening, for members of the public to participate in the deliberations and address the commission. The first is when we get to the moment in the agenda called verbal communications, when members of the public can address the commission on any item or any issue that is not on the agenda of the commission. The second is during the public portion of the public hearing of any agendized item. If you would like to address the commission tonight, we would ask that you fill out a speaker card, which is on the back of the benches in the council chambers, and pass them to the staff so that we can call you forward at the appropriate moment in tonight's meeting. Before we move forward with the agenda tonight, we want to be sure that everyone notes that Agenda Item Number One, which is a public hearing continuing an item from the Planning Commission meeting on September 25th, that's pertaining to town code amendments that are related to live entertainment uses in the town and changes to the alcohol beverage policy of the town, will be heard out of order, so it will be heard as the last item on the agenda, even though it is referenced as Agenda Item Number One. We have no minutes from prior meetings this evening to review and approve. We have two desk items or written communications. Given the length of them, we'll take a break at the appropriate time to give people a chance to review the desk items. There are copies of the desk items that are out in the foyer area, if there are members of the public who would like to see those desk items also. There's one requested continuance this evening, Agenda Item Number Two, which is requesting approval to construct a new single-family residence at 15644 Shady Lane, light number three. The staff has recommended that this item be continued to the meeting of the Planning Commission on October 23rd, since the applicant is making some revisions to the plan and exhibits. Are there questions of the staff or a motion to continue the item? Commissioner Bujua.
I'll move to continue the item to the meeting of October 23rd, 2013.
A motion by Commissioner Bujua, Commissioner Birch.
I'll second that.
Second, are there any other comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passing unanimously. We have no subcommittee reports for the subcommittees that the members of the Planning Commission serve on, in addition to serving on the committee. However, I would note that there is a meeting of the North Forty Specific Plan Advisory Committee on Tuesday, October 15th, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. The advisory committee, for the public's information, will be attempting to complete its work on the draft North Forty specific plan and forwarding, and then would forward it on to the consultants that will be completing a draft environmental impact review, which then would send it forward to the Planning Commission and then eventually to the town council. If, in fact, the North Forty Advisory Committee does not complete the task next Tuesday, there will be a subsequent meeting the next evening on Wednesday, October 16th, to complete the, so that they can complete the task and move that specific plan forward to, for environmental review and eventually to the Planning Commission and then on to the town council. We now move to verbal communications. We have one person who's turned in a card to speak with us at verbal communications, Ms. Chris Wiley.
Hi, I'm Chris Wiley at 544 University Avenue. And when we first started, number one, one of the samples that was used was the noise from the bocce court and the problems over there. I want to give you good news, that I had met with Tom Albanese, the owner, and we sat and went through every one of the complaints that the neighbors had, that I had, other people in that area. There were over thirty people who gave input. And when it was over, Tom Albanese, I would say, covered 100%. It doesn't mean that all the stuff is going to go away, because we both admit that occasionally something will arise. But I think they're going to jump on the steam cleaning at night, the other issues that had occurred with the loud breaking of bottles at 5:30 AM. I really sincerely think, now that Tom is involved and has directed his managers to be more attentive, to be fair to the bocce court, they're trying their best. I've said over and over again, I'm not trying to put them out of business. I'm trying to get them to work with the neighbors and the people to understand they're a business in the middle of a residential area. So, just being fair.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. There are no items on the consent calendar this evening. As noted earlier, the continued public hearing Agenda Item Number One will be heard as the last public hearing item this evening. The next item on our agenda is actually Agenda Item Number Three, and listed on the agenda, which is a public hearing considering architectural site application S-13-049, which is requesting approval to demolish a pre-1941 single-family residence at 134 Loma Alta Avenue, on property was owned R-18. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the property under consideration? Everyone has. Are there any disclosures by a commissioner for this item? Seeing none, Ms. Savage, may we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. And the property was removed from the historic resources inventory by the Historic Preservation Committee due to the lack of historical or architectural significance to the structure. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story, single-family home and detached garage. The detached garage would be located at the rear of the property and accessed from the existing alleyway. Staff and the architectural consultant did find that the design of the structure is compatible with the neighborhood from an architectural perspective. Staff has forwarded the application to the Planning Commission, because the project would result in the largest home in the immediate neighborhood in terms of square footage. The floor area ratio is compatible with the existing floor area ratios in the immediate neighborhood. The Planning Commission should consider whether the proposed square footage is compatible with the immediate neighborhood. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Are there any questions at this time of staff? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Other than the fact that it would be the largest in the neighborhood, I couldn't find anything in the staff report as to why your recommendation is denial. Could you tell me what, besides it being the largest or would be the largest in the neighborhood, staff believes should support a denial?
That would be the only reason. Our recommendation was conservative based on the square footage.
Before we open the public, portion of the public hearing, would ask fellow commissioners, does anyone need any additional time to review the desk items? We're going to take a brief couple of minutes to let people have a chance to finish reviewing the desk items.
I do have a question from Ms. Savage.
Go ahead and ask her, that's okay.
Ms. Savage, what is the difference between a garage and an access building?
An accessory structure.
Well, what I'm, the reason why I'm asking the question is because in the report, it talks about the size of the detached garage. But on the plans, it calls it an access building.
It's abbreviated for accessory building. So, a garage can be an accessory building. They're one in the same in this case.
And an accessory building can be a garage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
After having read the desk items, are there other questions that the commission has for staff? Commissioner Bujua.
Thank you. I had a question for staff about secondary dwelling units. What are the implications, if any, of the fact that they have, are proposing a full bathroom for the garage? You know, what, what needs to happen for a conversion? Or, it just was confusing to me that there's a full bath in the garage, so.
Staff has that concern, too. And in a lot of instances, we do request deed restrictions on those accessory structures with a full bathroom, and that is something that the Planning Commission could request as a condition of approval.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and to be clear, that deed restriction would be that it would not be used, rented or leased, as a secondary dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions at this time? Commissioner Birch.
Yeah, could you tell us again why this was removed from the historic listings?
The Historic Preservation Committee made specific findings related to the lack of architectural and historical significance, as well as the condition of the structure. And those findings, if you did want to look at them, they are summarized on page five of the staff report.
Are there other questions for the staff at this time? If not, we will open the public portion of the public hearing at this time and give the applicant up to, an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. I believe Don Prolo is going to address this initially. Mr. Prolo, for the record, please, your name and address.
Hello. I don't know how loud this is, I was just testing it. I'm Donald Prolo, and the address is 134 Loma Alta. And I'm the owner of the house. I planned to live in the house, and I designed the house with my architect, Chris Spalding. He's actually going to talk now.
Hi. Well, you just read all those letters, which we've seen too. Donald's been meeting with the neighbors the last week or so, since the story polls went up. And is, obviously, needs to do some things to make this house work. So, right out of the gate, he's willing to do some things to, to meet the neighbor concerns. A major concern is the rear balcony he has on the second floor. So, he's, he would, he'd like to keep it as a, as the minimal balcony, just three foot deep, so that it can't really be furnished, but he can keep the French doors out of his master bedroom. So, hopefully, that, that would be enough to, to compromise on that issue. The house could actually, under the town code, could actually move forward a little bit because of the averging of the setbacks of the two adjacent houses. So, we could move it forward two and a half feet. The more it goes forward, the more it, it opens up the light, air, and view of the two neighbors on each side. So, we'd be willing to do that. We could lower the whole building a foot, which helps the, again, helps both side neighbors a little bit with light and sky. He's willing to make all the windows on the second floor, on both sides, translucent or opaque, so that there's no privacy issues with the neighbors. Is, is willing to make that, he does not need a full bath in his garage. We can make that just a half-bath and make it small enough that there's no possibility of getting a shower in there. But beyond that, you know, this, this house was designed in a way that is what, you know, his dream home. Trang, is this working? You know, it's, he wanted a two-story house to have a nice big backyard. I'll show the concept he's got for the backyard. The half-bath in the garage is meant to service his outdoor living space in the backyard, since there's not an easily accessible bathroom in the kit, in the house. It's, it's got three bedrooms upstairs and the master upstairs. That's, that's the way he'd like to lay it out. You know, possibly, he'd like to keep the concept of the house, but we're, we understand the concerns of the neighbors and we'll do what we need to do to... Is this working, Trang? This was the idea for the backyard, so, you know, the, if we were to do a one-story house... This is a picture of, of the site. Here's, here's our site right here. The, the neighbors next door, they have a one-story house of slightly smaller size. You can see how it takes up really the, you know, the, the amount left for backyard is, is a lot smaller than what he's hoping to get. So, I'll sit down, we'll listen to what the neighbors complain, and then come back up.
Are there questions from the applicants? Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. I have a couple of questions. If you were to move the house forward two and a half feet, would that shorten then the porch depth?
No, because, the front porch, you mean?
Yes.
Right now, we're 25 feet to the front porch, and we'd be moving two and a half, two and a half feet forward to the front porch.
The reason why I ask the question is because the town architect mentioned the depth of that front porch, so I know that you widened it.
Right. The drawings, the drawings that you have in front of you has that widened to six feet, which is what the, the residential code asks for, for front porches.
All right. And then the other question I have, which may be in the drawings, but not easily readable by me. When you do the garage off of the alley, is that, are there going to be, are the doors coming up? Are they opening out? What's happening with that?
Roll-up doors.
Roll-up doors.
And so, the minimum, the, the minimum distance to the property line is, depends on the width of the alley.
Correct.
So, that we need a minimum of 25 feet from the front of the garage to the opposite side of the alley, so you can maneuver into the garage. But there's, the intent is not to park between the edge of the alley and the garage. There's, there's not room for that.
Well, that was, that was where I was leading to, so, so you answered the question for me. Those are my only two questions, thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Thank you. Mr. Spalding, and I'm conflicted here, because in the design guidelines introduction, Loma Alta is really separated out from a lot of neighborhoods, and it's mentioned. And one of the things that it's mentioned for is that it has a regular street grid pattern, which establishes its architectural character. And that, if you notice, that whole street is pretty much, you know, online with grids. So, moving the house forward, how will that keep the character of the street? And how much further, I know it's just a thought you had right now, but how much further were you thinking of moving it?
Well, right now, the, the house, when you're facing the property, the house to the right has a 20-foot front setback. The house to the left has a 25-foot front setback. The existing house has a 20-foot front setback. So, if we were to move it forward two and a half feet, it would split the difference between the, the house on the right and the house on the left, which is what the town code allows, to average the, the front setback between the two adjacent houses.
Okay, and then...
Right now, we're setback 20 feet, I mean, 25 feet, we'd be, and the, the house to the right is 20 feet.
Okay, all right. We'll come back to it, because I know you haven't designed it yet, but there's some other issues with the, the presence of the two-story. Anyway, we'll talk about it.
Commissioner Bujua.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. I know, I don't know if you've just got these desk items like we have, but...
I got them yesterday.
Got them yesterday, okay. So, you have a little advanced, so, I don't need an answer right now, but maybe when you come back from rebuttal, I'll, I'll re-ask this question. The last letter we have actually had some very specific architectural recommendations, and I'd love to get your thoughts on those at, at that time. So, if you're prepared to do it now, great, but if you need time to think about it, we can do that afterwards.
No, I, I looked at those, and, and those are all what we would incorporate anyway, except for, let me find that letter. We might not want to do the color accent on the window mullion. We might not want to do the color accent on the window mullion itself. That's like a three-color scheme. We were thinking more of a two-color scheme. I don't think that's a big issue. And then likewise, probably skip the Spanish tiles set in the stucco. But we would do everything else. So item A there, 1A.
And then, and then 1C?
1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, those would all be items we...
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sayak.
Mr. Spalding, what about the rest of the items on the, I guess it's the email dated October 3? There were nine specific provisions that was suggested for construction, and then there were three specific to site plan.
Right.
Did you and your client have a chance to look those over and have any comments you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, okay. The, the first nine are all about construction management, which, which, boy, it'd be great if the town had a blanket construction management, management policy that took all these into account. But have you read these?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, so I think what we would, what he would be willing to do is, is enter into a, or create a construction management plan that would address these items in, in a way that's...
Okay. And, and what about the three on the site plan? The one that specifically caught my attention was the reduction of the deck, specifically because you had mentioned you were going to reduce your second-floor balcony. And so does that also mean that the covered porch would also be reduced? Because you have less of that?
Well, I, is he, is he...
I think he meant the balcony.
I think he meant the balcony. I don't know if he's here. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And yes, we'll reduce that, be willing to do that.
Okay.
To like three feet. To make it look right, it'd be more like three feet by eight feet, so it's a little shallower and a little wider.
Okay.
And item two, air conditioning equipment, yes. Willing to do that. And the garage is, is actually a little bit bigger than 20 by 20, so that he can park in there and get his stuff.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant this time? If not, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
When I move to the portion of the public hearing where we encourage and invite the public to address the commission, we have several cards of people who've indicated interest in addressing the commission on this item. If you haven't turned a card in yet, please do it at this time to the staff, so we can call you at the appropriate moment. As we call your name, you will have three minutes to address the commission. We'd ask that you state your name and address for the record. The first person is Karen Evenden.
Hi. My name's Karen Evenden, and I live at 132 Loma Alta Avenue.
We need, Ms. Evenden, we need for you to talk into the microphone, please. Everyone can hear you.
My name's Karen Evenden, and I live at 132 Loma Alta Avenue. Okay. And firstly, we're delighted that someone has taken on the project of developing 134 Loma Alta. I live next door with my husband and my two children. When we moved to California, we were determined to find a place where we could raise our children, which had a strong community and a vibrant, established downtown in walking and cycling distance from the homes and schools. We also attracted to towns that retain their heritage. We were delighted to find all of this in the town of Los Gatos, and in fact, so focused our search on the Loma Alta, Los Gatos, Loma Alta Johnson area, as it epitomized the unique characteristics of this town. To live here, we compromised with a smaller home on a smaller lot, but the reward of the quality of life was worth it. Our issue is not with the redevelopment of 134 Loma Alta, but with the sheer bulk of the proposed residence. This is a poor match for the neighborhood, blocks essentially all of the natural light on our side of our home, and infringes on our privacy. The proposed building would dwarf the adjacent homes. The main residence is approximately twice the height of ours and stretches to the extremities on both sides. The resulting roofline differential between our properties is unprecedented for the immediate neighborhood. We believe that design does not consider sections 231 and 232 of the Town of Los Gatos design guidelines, which state that large structures should be avoided when the adjacent homes have smaller one-story houses. When we're talking about the mass of the residence, we're not just talking about the square footage in the main residence. In addition, the proposed plans includes the covered porch and the balcony and the double garage. All of these add to the mass and create an almost David and Goliath scenario from a visual, visuals perspective. By adding an extra story and moving closer to the property line, the rooms on that side of our, our house are robbed of their natural light. As well as blocking the sun, the story poles show that there is almost no sky visible from the windows on, at that side of our home. If the development goes ahead as planned, we would have to have lights on in these rooms all throughout the day. We feel, therefore, that the proposed structure is not in line with the guidelines that are laid out in section 311-1, which state that shadow impacts on the adjacent properties should be minimized. I'd like to emphasize that we're not just talking about direct sunlight here, but the indirect light as well, as the structure would tower over ours. In addition, in addition, the large deck plan at the back of the house, and I think we've discussed that, so I can skip over that, because I think that's an issue that has been covered. I mentioned at the beginning that what brought us to this specific historic neighborhood is the amazing community that exists on our beautiful street. One of the most attractive aspects of our home is the privacy. Despite being downtown, we're not overlooked by neighbors. We can dine in private outside, and our children can play in our backyard undisturbed. While we would like to see 134 Loma Alta redeveloped, the proposed building would loom over our house and our backyard and remove all natural light from half of our home. And importantly, it would adversely affect the character and the aesthetic appeal of this historic neighborhood. For all these reasons, we ask that the commission reject the plans as they currently stand.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the speaker? Commissioner Birch.
Hi. Thank you for coming today. I do have a couple of questions for you. One is, I was curious, as the plans were being developed with the new owner, how much involvement there was with the neighbors as these were being prepared for your input on your privacy?
So he came around one morning in the summer at one point and gave a hand sketch. I had actually been working on a project all night, which I'd explained to him, and hadn't actually slept the whole night. And so I said, "I'm sorry, I, I can't talk. We need to, you know, you need to get back to me on this." And he, and I looked at it, and I did actually say I would have issues with privacy and light with, with the way, and it was just a sketch, so I didn't have a full understanding of what it was. And that was the one contact I had, until the story poles then went up.
Okay. And since then, you just revisited it and discussed your issues with the privacy?
Sorry. And since then, and so then, on Thursday, I sent an email to Donald, and we got together on Sunday, and we expressed our concerns to him, and hoped that there would be some way that we could find a, a design that wouldn't completely diminish the quality of life in our home.
Can I ask one more? And I know you've discussed on, on that side, now you have no view of the sky or anything. I, I couldn't tell completely, standing there. Do you have hillside views from those windows at this time?
No. But literally, to look at the sky, you now have to go like that, looking out the window to actually see the sky.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Mrs. Evenden, when I stood in front of the property, I spent quite some time there, your home is to the right, that's correct?
Yes, we're the one that's downhill.
Right. And you have a tile type of roof, is that...
Yes.
Okay. So when I was standing there and I was looking at the height of your fence, and I was wondering about the light issue myself...
Yep.
What, what living quarters do you have on that left side of your home?
So we have my study, which is at, at the front, and I'm actually studying interior design right now, so natural light is quite important, because I, it's not just me sitting on a computer there. I, I do a lot of other work there as well. And then, at the very rear is our master bedroom, and then in the middle is my children's rooms. And those rooms are used a lot, because we don't have a playroom or a TV room or anything. It's all open plan in the rest of the house, and so this is the room where they go to be by themselves.
Well, the, the reason I was asking this question, I was just thinking that it's very narrow between your fence and your house. So that's narrow, and your roof slopes down. So I was thinking that it was a pretty...
It's not, it's not the brightest part of the house, but we do get light. And whatever light we get will be severely curtailed with the, the two-story structure. I mean, the, the, the house next door already does cut some of the light, because, because of the way the topography works. It's uphill, it's a single story. But especially, you know, in the first half of the day, you get a lot of light streaming in through those windows, and we were looking at it, and when you, that light comes through where the story poles are now, so that, that direct sunlight would completely disappear. But on top of that, it'll almost have this effect that we're living in the middle of a city, because we, it's going to be so close to us that any indirect sunlight is going to be reduced as well, because of, and the shadow of the building above us that's going to be up, uphill from us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Buzball.
Thank you for coming and speaking with us tonight. You've heard Mr. Prolo and Mr. Spalding talk about some concessions. I'm just wondering if any of those do anything to alleviate your concerns? Or are you saying that you really just want to see a one-story home here?
So moving the house forward would probably make a small, would make a difference in the very last room on, on that, but it wouldn't make a difference on any of the other rooms. But in the, in, in the rear room, it would probably make a, a difference, which is our master bedroom. Reducing one foot on the roofline, I'm honestly not sure how much difference that will really make. If you could see the view from our windows, I mean, it, it's pretty dramatic how, how high that building looms on us, especially because it, it comes much further to the property line than it currently, currently is. I don't know. I would like to look at a shadow map and see what the options are. It's, it's hard for me to actually give a definitive answer without actually seeing a revised shadow map and, and everything, so.
Other questions for the speaker? Commissioner, tell us four.
Great. Another letter came to us. I don't know, did, have you had a chance to see any of these letters?
Uh, no. Well, just what I got right now.
Just, okay.
Yes.
So on page, on, there's an exhibit here on pa, of one of the letters, and there's some photographs. I'm just trying to get a sense of what you see when you look out of your windows.
So when we look out of the window right now, we have, we, we don't have, it's not a view issue that we're concerned about, it's a light issue that we're concerned about. It, it's more a light issue rather than a view issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the speaker? If not, thank you very much. The next speaker is Laura Johnson.
Hi, I'm Laura Johnson. I live at 139 Loma Alta, and I'm the neighbor directly in front of his house, so his house, he's never talked to us at all about anything. We're going to be directly facing his house and looking at it every day from our kitchen and from our front room that we use as an office. Currently, we have hillside views, and I'm concerned about the second story, because it will cut it dramatically, and we'll probably lose most of the hillside views. And right now, we have a hillside view from our kitchen. It is through an olive tree, but it's still quite beautiful. And then from our office, we have a really nice hillside view, and it was one of the perks of buying this house. And that will be diminished significantly. I'm also concerned about the mass, because we'll, when I even see the story poles, when I saw them go up, it looks huge to me. It feels like their house is falling on our house. And I'm surprised if, just from the story poles, I feel that way. I can imagine, once a house goes straight up. I was also concerned about the fact that, like my neighbors, does it really fit the character of the neighborhood? That was a big concern for me, because we actually remodeled our home on the outside after we bought it a few years ago. And we read through all the design guidelines, and we actually chose not to do a second story, and to do, and we chose to remodel it as a craftsman style. And we got approved very easily, no neighbors complained or nothing, because we were extremely sensitive toward the character of the neighborhood. And everyone came by and told us how beautiful it came out. It was a 70s kind of tract house before, and we turned it into what looks now like a authentic craftsman-style home. And I feel like I went through the trouble to be very sensitive and give up on stuff I would have wanted, because I wanted to fit the character of the neighborhood. And so I think it's important for our future neighbors to respect the current neighbors and the quality and character of our neighborhood. I bought the house for that purpose as well, because I think Loma Alta is one of the most beautiful streets in Los Gatos, and that's why we've chosen to live there. Let me see. And then the only other concern, and it may not be, well, actually, I have two more concerns. The other one, it may not be a technical concern, but I know there are setback rules, and I'm surprised that he's allowed to build a second story that would only be 20 feet, because I thought the setback rule was 25 feet. So I would think any new construction would have to be behind that, not in front of that. So that's, I'm not sure if I'm technically correct, but it's just, I recall something about a 25-foot setback, and it sounds to me like you might be making an exception if you allow him to build a second story before the 25-foot setback. And then the last thing is, I'm also sensitive to the neighbors, and I feel a little bit that it's an invasion of privacy for our neighbors. I would feel very upset if somebody were directly looking into my backyard as well. So I support what the neighbors have been saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Other questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Good evening. Jennifer Lowe, we live at 138 Loma Alta, so two doors uphill from the proposed house. I wanted to give just a little bit of detail about our concerns. To be honest, we were never communicated with at all. My first knowledge about the house growing up was the temples. It was a fairly disturbing thing to see in the morning, that suddenly the views from one side of your house are going to be completely decimated. It would impact the hillside views from our house, because we happened to be lucky enough to have a significant number of views that sort of turned the corner, and they would be in the middle of our turn-the-corner views. In addition, the house would look so much larger than the other houses in the neighborhood. By no means, I'm not an architecture expert, or even an interior designer, but when you look at the neighborhood, it's actually a lovely street of similar-sized houses with similar-sized lots, with similar-sized setbacks. And your eye flows very cleanly across that. And it's something that we always liked about that particular neighborhood. It's interesting, one of the benefits of the house that we bought, and again, like many people, we bought on Loma Alta because of the charm of the street and the ability for our kids to grow up in Los Gatos, not because it was a house that was the size that we needed. It definitely isn't. But we love the look of the house, and we loved the views that we got from the house more than we loved the house. And in some ways, when you look out, you actually, we got a kick out of it, because we had gone to, on our honeymoon, to Provence. And if you look down the street going towards Los Gatos Boulevard, all that you see from our house is terracotta roofs all the way down. And it's quite lovely, and trees. There's no, no one else's window actually looks back at us, or us at them. So one of the benefits of living on a hillside like that is that you have one neighbor who gets to see everything about you, and then the other side, you get pure privacy all the way down the line. And this would directly impact that for not just us, but for our neighbors as well. You know, we live fairly close to each other. I know when my neighbors are having a barbecue, when their lights are on late at night, I don't think that we need a second story that does that for everyone in the area. All right? So it would impact more than just the houses directly on either side. It's a close neighborhood, we know each other well. We actually are very well-versed on each other's architecture, surprisingly enough. And so, walking around in the neighborhood in the last week, I've been amazed at the number of people who've said to me, "I feel so badly for you guys." And we're not the next-door neighbors, or the across-the-street neighbors. We're two levels up, and I feel pretty bad for us, too. The character of the neighborhood will change significantly. The hillside views will change significantly, and we're two houses up. So I can't imagine what it would be like to be next door. The character simply does not match. It's uncomfortable to look at. And I think that's something that should be kept in mind when we decide whether or not this should be allowed.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe. Other questions? Commissioner Smith.
Do you live in a one- or two-story home?
We have a two-story home where the second story goes back from the front. So the front story comes in the, I don't know how to say this technically. When you look at the house from the front, it looks like a one-story, and there's a grade. So our second story comes off the back and onto the grade.
And then, do you live next door to two-story homes?
And then, uh, do you live next door to two-story homes?
Uh, I believe the house that's uphill from us does have a second story, although, again, its first story is sunken down into the grade. So it's more like a basement than a first floor.
And then, across the street from you, there are two-story homes. Is that correct?
No, not, uh, hold on, let me think. No, across from us is a one-story home. It may be a one-story, and there may be a second story on the one on the other side, but I'm not totally positive. It doesn't look like a second story from where we are.
I'm just looking at pictures of your street.
Sure.
And so that's why I was trying to identify where you were, because there are a number...
We're on the corner where the alley is, if you're looking from above.
Okay. Yes, okay. There, there are a number of two-story homes. That's why I wondered if you, uh, lived in one as well.
The two-story on those existing homes, just to clarify, all seem to sit back from the front story so that you don't have that overwhelming two stories over the street. I think down at the end of Loma Alta, there may be one or two houses that have a two-story facade when you look right at it. But up on our side of the street, it doesn't have that impression at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Bushwa.
That was my question, so it's been answered.
Commissioner Birch.
Um, you stated that the two stories are sunken in on the grade. Do you mean if you were at sidewalk level, are there steps that, that go down so that the house sits slightly recessed from the street level?
The house on the other side of us does have that. So you actually can drop down into the first story, or you can go upstairs to the second story.
Okay.
Um, but the first story is actually dropped below the grade. I don't know if I'm describing it correctly, but...
No, that...
And in our case, again, you actually, if you were inside of our house, which is sort of an odd little house, you would actually walk downhill to the first floor in the back. And our second floor is only above the back. So the whole back of the house drops down in grade.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe.
Thank you.
We would now call Steve Piasecki.
Good evening. Chair Erickson, members of the Planning Commission, thank you for hosting this meeting. And thank you for asking so many questions about my email, so I don't have to spend a lot of time on it. I am retired, so I'm home most of the time, which is why I'm focusing on the construction management plan. I do understand that, that the construction process will be four to six months, so I get to listen to jackhammers and generators for four to six months. And that's just the nature of life. So I think those items that they are agreeing to in the construction management plan will help a lot. I appreciate that they're willing to take the deck down. Obviously, if you didn't have a second story, you wouldn't need the second-level deck. I live at 205 Johnson Avenue, so we are back-to-back neighbors. So we can wave to each other when we go to sleep at night. Our master bedrooms literally look at each other, which is, fortunately, I'm sufficiently far with the alley and the setback that I really don't have much to complain about. Not like my, the adjacent neighbors who are going to have the mass of the building right alongside of them. I would like to see the area in the garage 20 by 20, just so they can park two cars. I know it's a two-and-a-half-car garage, but I would like to have that deed restricted and kept available for parking. Now, you can't force them to park there. That's all right, as long as it's available. I'm okay with that. And also, the half-bath, whatever form it takes, it ought to be deed-restricted because 20 years from now, the, the new owners think, well, you know, wow, we got a half-bath. If we just close off this part of the garage, we can, you know, let our son live out there because we can't stand him in the house. Uh, I appreciate the architectural changes that they're willing to incorporate. I think that will help. And, um, I think that's all of my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Piasecki, are there questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. We would now call Virgil Quesal.
Good evening. My name is Virgil Quesal. I live right next door to Steve Piasecki. He's basically brought up my issue. The issue I have and concern would be the bathroom in the garage. When I purchased my home and started remodeling back in the late eight, 1980, I was denied of having a bathroom in the garage. So that's my concern. I just hope that's been addressed and looked at. So, thanks.
Commissioner Smith.
Um, I do have a question for you, sir. As I was driving up and down the alley, it did look like there were some secondary dwelling units in some of the homes where the garages looked as if perhaps people were living in them. Is, is that frequent in your neighborhood, or did I just see those drapes and maybe make a misunderstanding?
You're talking about the one on the alleyway on the corner?
I, I happened to see on the alley, yes.
Yes, okay. That, that house is next door to me. And when the earthquake demolished the house, it was there, there was actually a rental in the backyard. And so when that property was sold, it was divided into two properties instead of one. And so that, actually, that is a, a single-family dwelling with the garage. And they put a curtains up. I don't know. I'm not sure why, but...
All right. So, so you think it's a, it is a dwelling unit, and it also has a garage?
It has a one-car garage, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next call, George and Leslie Logan.
I'm going to speak for both of us. Good evening. We are George and Leslie Logan and live at 136 Loma Alta, which is adjacent to Mr. Poro's property on the uphill side. As mentioned in the letter we submitted, we sincerely appreciate the intention to improve the property, understand the need to demolish the existing structure, and believe the Spanish eclectic style is appropriate with the enhancements suggested by Mr. Piasecki. However, we feel we must support the staff recommendation of denial for this application due to the scale of the proposed projects and other elements that, which are simply not compatible with the immediate neighborhood. The proposed structure would negatively impact the quaint historic quality of our neighborhood located just blocks from downtown and impact the quality of life that the Logan family has enjoyed in this home for almost 50 years. The overall size and mass of the home and accessory building are too large for the lot size, especially with such minimal setbacks. It will have the largest square footage in the area, as you know. The immediate neighboring homes are one-story with larger side-setback parking areas on the side of the home. Although there are two other two-story homes in the larger neighborhood area, the topography, history, and configurations of those lots are very different from this property. The heightened configuration of this two-story design with minimal setbacks on both sides is inconsistent with too many of the town design guidelines regarding its bulk and height compared to that of the existing adjacent homes. The proposed project will have negative impacts on our quality of life. Because of the mass and height of the second floor, our views and sky exposure from nearly every window on that side of our home are almost completely occluded. In addition, on the original plan, the window placement accompanied by the large rear balcony creates a serious privacy concern for our main bathroom, main floor bedroom, dining room, and kitchen dining area, as well as our outdoor spaces. We also have grave concerns about those negative impacts to the immediate neighbors at 132 Loma Alta, who will suffer a significant loss of light in their home and a severe loss of privacy outdoors, even with a one-foot reduction in height. We are grateful that Mr. Poro responded to the request to meet on October 6th, but prior to September 27th, when the story poles were erected, we received no communication from him about this project. We respectfully request that you deny this application and ask Mr. Poro to work with his neighbors to create a project that is compatible, respectful, and allows us all to continue to enjoy the qualities that make Loma Alta such a truly wonderful place to live. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Are there questions for the speakers? Commissioner Sayak.
Ms. Logan, could you just confirm for me? You have a one-story, correct?
Yes, but it's a one-story with a basement. So 15 years ago, we remodeled, and we went down.
Okay. Because it has here that you have two stories, and so I just wanted that confirmation.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, and actually, I do have a second. Were you present at the meeting on October 6th?
I was.
Okay. And some of the changes that were just discussed prior, when the applicant spoke, were those changes also discussed at that time? And have you had time to reflect and...
Those changes were not discussed at the time. In fact, we got the impression that Mr. Poro didn't really want to make any changes. But obviously, that's been, you know, discussed on his end.
Okay. And so similar to Commissioner Bushwa's question to the other neighbor, are some of those concessions, what are your thoughts on those?
So I think the one-foot reduction in height would make very little difference. I think you can see from the photo demonstrations that I provided in my letter, the story poles are already above the top of our windows. So it would just bring them down to about level with the top of our windows. It would make very little difference. I think it would, I have also been in the Evenden's home, and I can tell you from looking through those windows that, that would not make any difference for their light as well. The balcony at three feet is still a concern, although it is much better because there's not going to be furniture and patio umbrellas and things up there and parties, right, looking into our backyard. Because as you can see, we see it all. But there will still be some view of our yard from that balcony. And I am concerned about that. And, yeah, so we're going to lose privacy. And we do sit on that deck, as I mentioned in one of the captions on the photos, we sit on that deck and watch the sun set almost every night in the summer. And so that's going to impact our lives.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Talisfor.
And so, just to, for us, for more information, so that the living space on that side of the house is what area of your house?
So, I, I have it listed, but it is a bedroom that we use as a dining room. So the front of the house is a dining room. The next room is a bathroom. That's the one our girls use to shower, teenage girls. The next one is a bedroom. And then it, set back from that is a stairwell and our dining area in our kitchen.
Okay. All right. And you did provide these simulations?
Yes.
Okay.
And to note, that only shows mass. There's no detail. There's no roofs or windows shown.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions for the speaker? If not, thank you very much. We don't have any other cards from speakers who would like to address the commission on this item. So we'll now close the public portion of the public hearing, and I'll turn to my fellow commissioners. Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. So, we're going to give the applicant three minutes to respond to the comments made by the members of the public.
I was just asking my client if he was, perhaps we could make the second story smaller and make the first story larger. Not very amenable to that, but I did want to illustrate one thing. Can you see that? So this, this upper line is the second-story house we have proposed right now. If it were to be one-story, with the, the December shadow would still completely block the, the lower neighbor, even as a one-story. This is the existing, existing house, which has a flat roof. So it's very low. And, and anything we would build today, unless it had a flat roof, would, would necessarily be higher. And I, I just wanted to point out that if we did make it just, just a one-story, it would help the uphill neighbor quite a bit. But it would actually be somewhat detrimental to the lower neighbor because the one-story house would necessarily be deeper in the lot. So right now, the two-story portion blocks about half of their house in depth. And if it was one-story, it would block the entire wall all the way back. But my client doesn't really want to do a one-story anyway. But depending on what the commission says, I mean, one possibility would be to move the master suite onto the lower level and have a small, three small bedrooms upstairs so that we could reduce the bulk of the second story, you know, 30% or something like that, which would, would make it shallower on the lot and open up the light and views on both sides.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Several of the neighbors had commented that they would like to work with the owner and probably you, Mr. Spalding. Are you amenable to that? Is that something that you, it doesn't sound like they had a conversation that resulted in anything except for tonight. So I'm just wondering, would that be amenable to you and your client?
Well, it, it was kind of my understanding that they either wanted a one-story, I mean, they just wanted it to be one-story, which is not what I would, what I wanted. And so even reducing the size of the second story seems like they would have all, basically, the same problems with privacy. And, I mean, maybe it would be 10 feet less, but I don't know how much. So I kind of just didn't know what to say with all their, their concerns because, I mean, the, the existing house there is really tiny, so it's practically an empty lot. So it seems like no matter what is put there, there's going to be quite a bit of change from what's there.
And I just have one other follow-up question, and it's of Mr. Spalding. So that is a sloping street. And I'm wondering, is your design of this house, did it take that into consideration when you were designing the house of sloping it like the other homes?
Uh, yeah, we're, this, this lot's pretty much right where it goes from flat and starts to get steeper. And if, and you can, you can see on our, our front ele, front elevation, we've got the, the front of the house built up about six inches in grade from the natural slope. And that's, when, when I said we could lower it a foot, we would lower that back down right to the natural grade. And also lower, we have an eight-foot-six-inch second-floor plate height, and we'd be willing to put that down to your, you know, eight-foot kind of minimum ceiling height. So that was, that was how we were going to get the 12-inch. And we can't really reduce it, and we can't really dig it down in the hill because, I mean, further than that, or we'd create a drainage problem.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
You had thrown something out, which you had not had a chance to discuss with your client, or perhaps you had discussed it and he wasn't enthusiastic about it. One of the things I think you said was that if the second story were redesigned, it could be so redesigned so that the downhill neighbor would be less impacted than that, that neighbor would be impacted by a single story. Did I misunderstand you?
Well, looking at the, the houses on either side, they're both impacted by the second story, obviously. But the, the deeper that second story is in the lot, the more it impacts both neighbors. And the, and the way their windows are, especially the up here, uphill neighbor, the more that if that second-story bulk was put towards the front of the lot, the more it would open up their, their main views out towards the mountains and trees. Whereas if we were to put the, the second story further back on the lot, then it, it puts it right in front of their deck, right in front of their kitchen. And then on, for the downhill side, their kids' bedrooms are right in the middle of the house. If we moved it as far, if we made the second floor shallower in depth on the lot and moved it forward as far as we could, we could open up the light to at least one of those bedrooms.
I just want to be clear in my own mind, then, what I've heard the neighbors basically saying is they, they would prefer it to be a one-story. I was a bit surprised when you're, one of the things you said was that a one-story would nonetheless deprive the, of the lower home
Right.
of the same amount of light, which is sort of counterintuitive. Could you explain that?
Yeah, it's because right now, the, the footprint of the two-story house is, only goes about 50, well, a little bit, I mean, the, the two-story portion of the house is about 50% of the length of their house. So the two-story portion is shading half of their wall. If it was a one-story house, it would be similar to their house, which is a one-story house of similar size. It would be the same length as their house on the lot, meaning that, that entire wall would be shaded by the one-story house. Whereas now, the, the one-story stops short of the back of their house by about 25 feet. So the, the whole length of their house would be, would have a wall, whereas now, only 50% of it has a two-story portion and about 60% has a one-story.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Birch.
I certainly understand the need for space, and it is a very small home. In your review and your, your thoughts on design, was a basement ever an option? It certainly is a good way to get space and minimize the massing for a second story.
Yes, we did look into putting a basement. And there's a perched water table. I think everyone probably knows what it is, where the, there's, like during the winter, the water travels through like a gravel layer, and it's only like four feet down. So it just seemed like putting a basement there, it required a lot of extra design. So, it just seemed like putting a basement there, it required a lot of extra design, and it could potentially leak, and it requires pumps and all kinds of stuff, and it, it just seemed a little bit, you know, too much, given the water table. So, that was why I opted not to put the basement.
Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Spalding, could you put up the sketch that you had that showed the height of the one-story? Against the neighbor? So, I just want to reiterate what I understand. If there were a one-story, it would be higher than the home that is there now, because the home has a flat roof that's currently there, so it would go up. So, no matter what, the house to the right, as you face the new construction, would be impacted, even if it were a one-story.
Right, because it, it would get closer to the property line, because the existing house has, like, a sixteen-foot setback on that side. So, we, right now, we're at eight, we're going to eight-foot setback. And the, the new roofline with a pitched roof would go up about six feet higher than the existing one-story house, and then it would be a lot deeper in the lot.
So, then my second question is more philosophical. I have found, at least from your comments, that the owner seems to be very open to making certain changes. And the neighbors have raised some issues tonight that perhaps the owner might want to think about more. And so, I'm wondering if there isn't room, rather than running the risk of denying this application, perhaps there should be another meeting with the neighbors, and we could continue the matter, and you could come back and see if there couldn't be a little more shape to the compromises necessary. You know, the, the home you've designed is beautiful, the setbacks are correct, so, you know, I understand that part of it, but the neighbors are going to be there for a long time, and so is this owner. And so, what I'm wondering is, if you don't think maybe another meeting or two would be helpful, and we could, we could hear this matter again, and we could continue it?
Well, I think that would be a good idea, you know, even if they can't come to an agreement, at least that would give us a chance to think it through.
Alright.
Other questions for the applicant? If not, now we'll close the public portion of the public hearing, and I'll turn to my commissioners and ask whether there are questions, comments, or a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have a comment, I think Commissioner Smith's suggestion is a very, very good one. I think this is somewhat complex. It doesn't look like you can do anything which will not have an impact. You've got the neighbor across the street whose view will be impacted, you've got the neighbor upstream and downstream and whatever, you've got all kinds of things. And I, it sounds to me like it would be worthwhile having the people sit down and explore some opportunities and some, some issues, and if it's not successful, then we could make the hard decision. So, I would support a motion, if Commissioner Smith wants to make that motion, that we continue the matter. And that's with, it's unusual in the sense that I understand the applicant to have already agreed to that.
Other questions or comments from other members of the commission? Commissioner Sayak.
Actually, if I may, just ask a question of staff before we proceed.
Absolutely.
I wanted to get into the details that were identified in the potential construction management plan. And there's a lot of specificity that we really haven't seen with others, and so, you may answer it now, or you may answer it at another time when working with the applicant, but do we get into these definitions of when workers arrive and when they leave and, and things of that nature? Is that clearly defined? Is there a blanket construction management plan that we usually offer to applicants, or is it on a case-by-case basis?
We do have a pre-drafted construction management plan condition that we do place on projects when there are concerns from the neighbors. And that particular, particular condition does address traffic, staging, et cetera. It doesn't necessarily address when workers arrive, but it has the flexibility to contain that, should there be concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Birch.
I also will support a motion to continue this. I think that is a good idea, and I believe that there are probably a lot of opportunities here for some compromise. I think we all understand that people will be impacted, but it's now about minimizing the impact. I would just also like to ask that, as it's being reviewed, that the residential design guidelines be referenced closely as far as second stories being subservient to the first, reduced in mass and scale, attempted to be set back, very similarly to many of the second-story homes already on the street, so that the overall design intent in that neighborhood stays intact.
Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor.
Thank you, and I'm just going to reiterate that, I'm not going to reiterate it, but what Commissioner Birch has said is probably what I would have said. One thing that, two things I want to say. One, that I was very impressed with the quality of the comments from the neighbors, from not only a technical standpoint, but also from their absolute passion for where they live. It's rare, well, probably not in our town, but I would say that quality is what makes us Los Gatos. That quality of neighborhood is why it's an absolute precious neighborhood. And I think the responsibility, when you buy into a neighborhood like that, like I heard from the residents tonight, is that you have to be respectful of what the character is, and that's why you buy there, and that you do sometimes sacrifice your second stories, because it keeps the character, it keeps the neighborhood and the harmony all flowing. It's very apparent on that street. The structure that stands out to me, and I'm going to, I'm going to, and the reason I'm going to mention this is because a few years ago, we, some of us commissioners walked with the architecture consultant that we use, and he took us around your neighborhood, and he pointed out the houses that didn't work. And one of them, unfortunately, resembles, and I'm sorry to bring this up, resembles the design that we were presented with tonight. And so, I'm really conflicted, because I had that architect, our architect, tell us, you know, the reasons, and now I see this again. So, I really am glad that the neighbors came forward, and I'm glad that you're going to be a new resident in that neighborhood. Sounds like they're wonderful people to know, and I'm sure that we can, you know, work it out. I hope so, thank you.
Commissioner Sayak.
Just two things. One, should we let Commissioner Smith make the motion? Before I make any comments?
I'd like to do one thing before we do that. I'd like to reopen the public portion of the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward. The staff has suggested that we could, if, if we were going to continue this item, it could be placed on the commission's agenda on November thirteenth, so that's a question for both the applicant and potentially for Mr. Spalding. Does that give you adequate time to redo whatever you might need to, to work on, whatever you might need to work on for reconsideration?
Is, is there only one in November?
That's correct.
Yeah, and so maybe the, the December, December tenth?
That's December tenth, December eleventh, actually.
December eleventh.
There are two calendars up on the board right now, there's 2014 and 2013.
Okay, yes, yeah, it's December eleven.
December eleventh is, is the Wednesday in.
That would give us enough time to, to actually meet with the neighbors and go back and forth, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, now, reclose the public portion of the public hearing. Commissioner Smith.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we continue architectural insight application S-13049 relating to 134 Loma Alta Avenue until December the eleventh, 2013, in order to give the applicant and the neighbors an opportunity to continue to meet, and the applicant's architect to perhaps incorporate some of the recommendations or suggestions that were made tonight.
Commissioner Sayak.
I'll second the motion. And in addition, I just wanted to make a comment, it doesn't necessarily have to be a part of the motion, but one thing that would be helpful when it does return to the applicant, what would be helpful for me is, is a solar shadow study of the different variations. Today, you gave us a hand-drawn sketch, and what would be most helpful is if you actually had one that not only shows with the one-story, as well as the length of its effect on the neighboring home at 132. Thank you.
Commissioner Bujow.
Thank you, I'm going to be supporting the motion. I just wanted to add a couple of comments. One, I think it's a, a well-designed home, and I think, you know, it meets all of our setbacks and height restrictions, and it, it comes down to neighborhood compatibility. I think that's something we heard over and over again. And we look at that in several ways. We have our consulting architect giving us his professional interpretation of that, which he thought it, it was compatible. We have our own interpretations, we look to our, our guiding documents, but we also have the neighborhood coming out and telling us whether or not it's compatible, and I think we saw that enforced today. I don't, personally, I don't think a two-story home in and of itself is incompatible with this neighborhood. However, I think when you drive that street, which I did several times, looking for two-story homes, they're not very conspicuous. So, you really have to look for them, and, and when you drive down this street, this really jumps out at you. And so, I think, I think keeping that in mind as you go through the redesign, I think would be helpful, so.
Thank you very much for those comments, Commissioner Bujow. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Sayak, to continue the item to December eleventh, 2013. Any further comments from the commission? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Passing unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing considering general plan amendment GP-13-003 and zoning code amendment A-12-003, which would lead to amending the general plan housing element technical appendix housing sites inventory to include the affordable housing overlay zone sites. Amend chapter twenty-nine of the town code by adding division five to article eight, codifying the affordable housing overlay zone. Apply the affordable housing overlay zone designation to the five properties noted in the staff report, and approve the affordable housing overlay zone design guidelines. Mr. Adonias, may we have a staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Chair X. Erwin Adonias of the Community Development Department. As you noted, what the planning commission is being asked to do this evening is to provide a recommendation to the town council regarding the proposed affordable housing overlay zone, or AHOS, that is required as part of the implementation action in the town's existing state-certified housing element. The AHOS is required to be adopted in this housing element period, which ends on December thirty-first, 2013. Specifically, as you've noted, the commission is being asked to review the general plan committee's recommendations with regards to the general plan amendment, which is really the amending two exhibits in the technical appendix of the housing element to reflect the new, newly recommended AHOS sites and the removal of the previously recommended sites as designated by the general plan committee. As you also noted, the, or the item before you tonight has amendments to chapter twenty-nine of the, the town code, the zoning regulations, which actually establish the overlay zone and the standards for its requirements. And then also this evening, as part of your consideration, there's actual five zoning ordinance amendments that actually change the zoning map and establishes the boundaries for the overlay on each one of the new sites. There's an existing site that was previously recommended, the South Bay site, and there are four new sites that have been recommended by the general plan committee. In addition to that, there's also the affordable housing overlay zone design guidelines that the general plan committee previously recommended after about nine months of work last year, and in another seven months of work this year. The final item that you're being asked to look at is the addendum to the general plan EIR. In 2010, there was actually an environmental impact report that was prepared for the general plan, the housing element was part of that. This is an addendum that's required statutorily that notes that the proposed changes do not have additional impacts beyond what was considered in that document. And then, as noted in the staff report, the town council returned the AHOS proposal that was previously considered in January back to the general plan committee for reconsideration of the sites. And since January, the general plan committee has held seven public meetings to formulate its recommendation on this matter. The committee has reviewed the original forty-one sites that were considered as part of the general plan review, as well as eleven additional sites suggested by the public. And as directed by the council, in addition to the general plan committee meetings, the staff actually conducted an additional neighborhood outreach meeting on June fourth. We sent out approximately a thousand notices within a five-hundred-foot range for the new sites, and we conducted the neighborhood outreach meeting for the neighbors to learn about the AHOS and the general plan committee's work. In September, the committee basically concluded its work, which resulted in the recommendations for approval, they're included in the packet that you have this evening. And as part of my presentation, I want to highlight some of the key items that were part of the committee's work. One of the successful things the committee actually did was provide a venue for residents and the public to learn about the AHOS. That was one of the goals for the, for the council. And it provided a venue where the public was able to be able to make comments and provide direct, meaningful input to the committee during its deliberations. The committee also was able to identify better geographic sites in terms of distribution. The committee, as part of its work, limited densities for the affordable housing overlay zones to twenty dwelling units per acre, which is sort of like the highest designation in our general plan. The committee, as part of its work, also felt that it was key to eliminate additional density bonuses, which were previously recommended in the prior AHOS, and was reviewed by the planning commission last year, and was reviewed by council in January. The committee, as part of its work, also was able to review the work of staff to document that the unmet regional housing needs allocation, because of the town's progress in producing housing, could be reduced to three hundred and forty-six units rather than the four, than the four hundred and fifty-two units that were previously considered. This also helped reduce the number of units that had to be put into the AHOS, and also allowed the density to be reduced slightly. Based on the staff report and the prepared materials that you have before you this evening, staff recommends conducting the public hearing as required, making the appropriate findings as noted in exhibit nine, and forwarding a recommendation to the town council for approval. This concludes my presentation, but I am available for question or specific questions regarding any of the materials or exhibits.
Thank you, Mr. Adonias. Are there questions of the staff at this time? Commissioner Talisfor.
Before I do that, may I make a comment? And it's really for the general.
Absolutely.
After reading the two inches, is it two? Maybe it's two and a half inches of material, all the minutes, I can only imagine how rich those conversations were between the staff and the general plan committee. I am impressed with the work that was done. It's thorough. You covered all the issues that I would have had were covered. You know, the different housing realms were looked at thoroughly. The fact that the public was included, and their, and their comments were incorporated into significant changes as far as the sites, it really made me proud that, as a town, we do listen to the, the residents here. But truthfully, my hat is off to the general plan committee, seriously, and our two member, three members, Charles, John, and Mariko, who were on that. Anyway, but I do have this burning question. So, and I've asked it from the beginning of this, but how does Rena establish the number of housing units in our town? And you've probably answered before, but just let's get it on the record again. What data or tools do they use? May I ask this? Do they come and visit our town? Do they? Do they, do they drive and see what sites we have? Do they know the square footage in our town? Just out of curiosity, and I'm sure we're not the only small town that has this issue. So with that in mind, thank you.
I'm not aware that ABAG has actually visited the town to establish the RENA. Typically, what they do is they work off Department of Finance estimates, they review different census, different projection data. And then, the way that this was established is there were actually committees that were formed as part of the Bay Area Plan. They established a formula. The formula was supposed to take into account proximity of transit and jobs. Had they stuck to that formula, our numbers probably would have been reduced. For the next cycle, they're actually going to be slightly higher because they actually established a floor as well. But it is not my understanding that they actually fully understand the character of the town or a lot of other communities that they're setting these numbers for. It's basically a projection based on the numbers that they have and some of the Department of Finance numbers that are established.
So, just as a follow-up, and so what really has been designed here or created here isn't actually, we're not building something, but we are creating the potential for something to be built? Is that a better way to, is that, am I understanding that? Or you want to rephrase that for me?
No, actually, the task for the town, and this is part of the state mandate, is that we have to plan for the projected need based on those ABAG numbers in terms of what they're telling us we need, based on what ABAG thinks our local growth's going to be during this planning period, and then in the next period it'll have that as well. But the mandate is, we actually have to do the planning for that, whether it's establishing overlay zones or actually rezoning property or having other strategies. The burden on us is to actually have planning to be able to accommodate. We're not obligated to build it or pay for it, but we actually have to plan and have it available or have somebody potentially be able to build the units.
Are there other questions of the staff at this time? Seeing none, we will move to open the public portion of the public hearing and invite comments from members of the public. We only have one speaker card at this point in time. If there are other members of the public who would like to address the commission, we would ask you to fill out a speaker card and turn it to the staff at this point in time. The only speaker card we have is Mr. Frederick Lyon.
Good evening. Excuse me, I am Frederick Lyon. I'm the attorney for Los Gatos Lodge LLC and for Keaton Nurhan. These are the owners of the properties which are, these are the owners of one of the properties which has been, two of the properties, forgive me, which have been selected for the AHOS, for inclusion in the AHOS. And I think I can save you considerable agony by presenting the... Or perhaps I'll just add to the agony, I'm not sure which. I rise here to oppose each of the matters that Mr. O'Donoghue has mentioned in his report, although there are certain qualifications to that opposition. I think everything is contained in what I have given you. But I would like to point out just a couple of things that you'll find in there. Number one, the things that I am particularly opposed to. First of all, we think that the choice of the addendum for the EIR was the incorrect choice, and we believe that the public resources code requires more than this and wish to have that on the record. This is particularly with respect to the selection of the EIR itself, or rather, the addendum itself, rather than at least a fully documented supplement. And with particular respect to public services, to noise, and to traffic. In addition to that, we are strongly opposed, not to the idea of the affordable housing, but to the process which removed the density credits, which are offered both by the state and, in fact, by the ordinances of the town of Los Gatos, but which, by this ordinance, were removed for at least these sites. And that you will find in your ordinance, which is proposed here tonight, 29.80... We have 30 seconds, is that right?
We're going to extend you a minute because you gave us a rather lengthy document.
I probably don't really need a minute because I'm not going to try to get fully into that document. I thank you for that, however. Anyway, it's 29.80.515. This is the ordinance which states that the density credits, which are normally available for this sort of thing, are removed. So that the 20 units per acre, which are available to someone who chooses to develop affordable housing, are not available under this ordinance. That's, that's a major... And then, throughout the minutes of the general plan committee, you find a trimming of the incentives for, for affordable housing, which takes away any reason for doing so, even if, as we are qualified to do, we might choose to do so, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Are there questions for the speaker? Commissioner Sayak.
Mr. Lyons, thank you for providing this, as I hope to have the opportunity to read it in more depth. But have you had any conversations with staff prior to your, your statements tonight as well as this letter?
Yes, I have.
Have you been in consultation with them as we've been developing and identifying the different sites, particularly these two that you're representing?
Yes.
You have? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bujow.
Mr. Lyon, could you, I, could you elaborate a little bit? So I'm assuming, again, this is kind of a lot to take in at the last minute here, but could you elaborate on your sequel point? And I think I heard you say you don't think an addendum is appropriate, and you're suggesting a supplemental EIR would be a more appropriate course of action. Could you expand on why you believe that a little bit more?
Yes, I think I can. With respect to traffic studies, I don't think that the traffic studies that are referred to in the documentation that has been provided indicate a sufficient empirical data to make a conclusion that, that the traffic, which will be generated for this specific area, will, will not create a significant environmental impact. And of course, that's the reason for an environmental impact report. As for the noise, or did you want me just to expand on traffic, or were you interested in each of the?
No, I was just understand, I wanted to understand why you thought a different process was necessary, and my, you've answered it by telling me that you believe that there are additional significant impacts that weren't addressed in the original EIR and therefore supplementals warranted.
That's right.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay. I can, I can elaborate with respect to noise and public services.
Are there any question, any further questions for Mr. Lyon? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lee Cantano.
I have a lot to say, so I'm going to try and speed through it. My overall comment is that, based on the photos in the document, even though I am a strong supporter of affordable housing and high-density housing in general, what I see is not examples of good architecture and good site design throughout the document, especially with respect to the small lot and cottage clusters as it's presented in the photos. I have comments to make about the applicability, and I'm talking about the guidelines, obviously, and how, if they also, my comments might also have effect on the ordinances. Applicability, organization, guidelines versus standards, photos, illustrations, and just some general comments. In terms of applicability, on page one of the document, it's really not clear what the intent of this document is. It says it applies to projects that have a significant component of affordable housing, but it doesn't define that. It's not totally clear to me that this, these guidelines apply to all uses that are developed on the AHOS site other than the affordable units. And the, excuse me, I'm losing my train of thought here. It also indicates that if it's not an affordable housing site that's identified, the normal procedure of A&amp;S applies, and yet at the North Forty meeting or North Forty draft design guidelines includes many of these same things. So I have questions about what this really is intended to do. And then, going on to the organization, the document itself talks about standards and guidelines, and yet it's titled guidelines. In addition, it seems most of the document is concentrated on the general idea of general design guidelines and defining and presenting guidelines and standards for specific housing types. Only in chapter three do we get to the AHOS sites specifically, and in chapter three, although throughout the document, it, it talks about... Sorry, I lost my train of thought here. It doesn't talk about the suitability of the housing types. There's comments about small lot and cluster housing not being applicable to the South Bay site, but it's never included in chapter three and makes a strong statement. It's, chapter three doesn't actually include guidelines. They're not listed in the document specifically, and I guess that's, I'm going to ask for some more time since.
We're going to give you another 30 seconds.
Guidelines and standards, there's not a big distinct, it's hard to tell what is a standard and what is a guideline. Under the standards section, there are guidelines. Under the guidelines section, there are standards that are included. When you use terms like provide, preserve, et cetera, without a modifier of shall or should, it's hard to tell whether it's a standard or a document. Shall provide is quite different than should provide. Also, when you use the qualifier of shall encourage as a standard, in effect, you're turning it into a guideline. And when you use, if possible, and extend, extent of feasibility for guidelines, you're really degrading that also. The guidelines themselves have enough flexibility without adding additional flexibility. I'm just going to, I'm going to take a little bit more time since I may only...
Yeah, let's see whether there are questions.
I want to talk about illustrations and photos.
Yeah, let's see whether there are questions that we have from commissioners.
I just want to make a comment. When we have these very detailed comments, it would be very helpful if we had something in writing. To tell us all this stuff now and expect us to absorb it, seems to me, I don't know why, more time is necessary, because the presentation assumes facts not in evidence, then anybody could follow all this stuff.
May I, I'd like to make an apology because I did spend a considerable amount of time last, yesterday and this morning, early this morning till 10 o'clock, getting all of this together in a better format than I've provided here in writing, and then due to my stupidity of technology, I managed to delete it all and could not recover it. So I apologize. If you think you're frustrated, you can't imagine what I felt.
Let's see if there are questions that the commission has for Ms. Cantano. Commissioner Sayak.
I completely agree with Commissioner O'Donnell, and I'm hoping that staff is keeping track of some of these. Are there specific photos that?
Yeah, what I was going, oh, if I may.
If you can...
What I was going to say about the photos is that, in general, they are good illustrations of what they're intended to illustrate, but often, unintentionally, they include illustrations of things that maybe we don't want to be illustrated. And in particular, God, one that I can remember totally off the top of my head is on page seven, the illustration of the alleys with the units above the garages. It's a good illustration of that, but it's also not a good illustration of pedestrian-friendly entrances or variability in the, in the building facades, or not having a whole row of units above the garages. In addition, most of the illustrations in here all have the buildings lined up in a row. And even though they're guidelines about setting them back and variation and varying the elevations, the overall general concept of practically all the types except for the multiplex and the townhouses is just rows, straight rows of housing. And, you know, a lot of the concepts would be better illustrated without that verbal or visual noise if they were done as illustrations illustrating a single point instead of, instead of photos. You know, I think, I've seen lots of affordable housing or large projects that I really like. In fact, my husband and I have unconsciously twice gone into apartment complexes to ask about availability of apartments, when we're looking for apartments, only to discover that they were affordable housing projects that we didn't qualify for. So it bothers me that if I just looked at this, I don't support the styles that are being presented. I don't think it does justice to the creative architecture, and I don't think it does justice to the character of Los Gatos.
Are there other questions from Ms. Cantano at this time? If not, we would remind both Mr. Lyon and Ms. Cantano that ultimate action on this item will be taken by the town council, and they will conduct their own public hearing. There'll be another opportunity if one would like to, to provide information before the final decision is made. Do we have other speakers who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, we'll close the public portion of the public hearing. I'll turn to commissioners for comments or potential motion. I'd like to add one comment as someone who joined the general plan committee while the process was underway. I would echo Commissioner Talasfor's comments earlier about the thoroughness of the general plan committee, and would like to be on the record particularly commending fellow commissioner Bujow, who did a marvelous job of both allowing opportunity for public feedback on it and respecting that, and also marshaling the process along so that it didn't last for several years, which was a very delicate thing to do. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I would make a motion that we recommend the adoption to the town council, and that first, we make the required findings, which are set forth in exhibit nine, that we forward the recommendation to the town council for approval of the general plan amendment, GP-13-... the recommendation to the town council for approval of the General Plan Amendment, GP-13, period 003, which is Exhibit Two. We forward a recommendation to the town council for approving of the zoning code amendment A-12-003, which is Exhibit One. We forward a recommendation to the town council for approval of the five ordinances applying to AHA's five sites listed in this report, which are Exhibits Three through Seven. Forward a recommendation to the town council for approval of the resolution approving the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone Design Guidelines, which is Exhibit Eight. And forward a recommendation to the town council for approval of the Addendum to the General Plan Environmental Impact Report, which is Exhibit Ten. That would be my motion.
Commissioner Talisfor.
And I will second that motion at this point.
We have a motion to move this forward in a positive direction to the town council, by Commissioner O'Donnell, a second by Commissioner Talisfor. Are there other comments from members of the commission? Commissioner Smith.
I'll make a general comment, and that is that I attended the very first AHA's meeting as a member of the public, and from that very first meeting to the final meetings, there has been such progress between staff, the members of the General Plan Committee, and the public, that I just, I want to commend everyone for the level of work that they did, and I'm definitely going to support the motion.
Other comments? Commissioner Sayak.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair Erickson. What I wanted to do was also just kind of highlight that in addition to the hard work that was brought forward by the staff and committee, that really, there were a tremendous number of residents that came forward during this process that provide voluminous amounts of information that we as committee members didn't have readily available, and a lot of that information really helped craft the information that we have before us. And so, you know, there are several here, and there are several probably watching, so I just want to make sure that others are aware that this was not only just the work of the committee and staff, but there were many, many residents that contributed to this effort that aren't necessarily highlighted in this document. Another thing, I just wanted to make two brief comments with regard to the environmental impacts. That is something certainly that I'm sensitive to, and when these move forward, I just want to make it clear on the record and to council when this is before them, that each project will have their own environmental studies and traffic impacts based on the detailed application. And so, a lot of these generalities that we may worry about would be taken care of when those applicant, applications come forward. And then to the specific comments about the draft in Exhibit Eight, having worked on this, oftentimes when you work on something so much, it's hard to distinguish what a person who has read it is not understanding for the first time, so it would be tremendously helpful if that could go forward to council. I think it relays the information that the committee as a whole was trying to convey, and I do want to make sure that if someone doesn't understand, that discrepancy is understood by the council when they look at it, since I've seen this in and out, and so I can't make that distinction clearly. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Sayak. Other comments at this time? If not, we have a motion in front of us. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. We're going to take about a five-minute break and then move to the next item on the agenda. Planning Commission of the Town of Los Gatos for October 9th. The next item on our agenda is a continued public hearing from the Planning Commission of September the 25th, 2013, considering Town Code Amendment Application A-13-04, which is proposing adoption of amendments to the zoning regulations contained in Chapter 29 of the Town Code to incorporate land use regulations related to live entertainment. In addition, our proposed amendments to the town's alcohol beverage policy and the live entertainment regulatory process that's proposed in Chapter Three, Article Seven of the Town Code. Ms. Mosley and Mr. O'Donious are here to answer any questions from the staff. They have only a couple of small comments.
Staff doesn't have anything to add to the staff report at this time.
Okay, so they're available to answer any questions that we have at this point in time. Commissioner Sayak.
Thank you. A lot of the comments that we have received in our desk item today, seems like it could be specific input that would be helpful in the CUP enforcement process that we've been talking about, and I'm wondering if, can we officially ask, request that this be included in that? If, I'm unclear how this process is and who's working on it, so if someone could just elaborate on how we could provide some input into that.
So you can provide direction, and we will make Ms. Bailey aware of the information that you believe is pertinent to that process, and make sure that that gets included. Alternatively, members of the public, I'm sure as that process moves forward, will have opportunities before the council to provide further input or resubmit the input that they provided based on this process.
Commissioner Bujoir.
Thank you. I want to talk about the definition of a bar. So, it sounds like staff did not follow our suggestion about how to define them because it would create non-conforming parking situations for certain establishments. What are the ramifications to a particular business of doing that? I want to understand that. So if we change the definition of a separate bar, certain business now has a non-conforming parking situation, what does it mean for that business, and what does it mean for the town?
I believe I understand the entirety of your question. Within the downtown area, not just the C2 zone, but the downtown area defined within the general plan, the parking requirements for restaurants with separate bars is one space for every three seats, versus restaurants that may have a physical bar that acts as what we had originally included as a food counter, requires one for every four seats. So effectively, if you were to change that and not allow a physical bar to be a food counter and required it to be considered a separate bar, you would effectively remove 25% of their allowable seating.
So they could, to accommodate that change, they could either reduce their seating or magically find parking somewhere, right? That would, I mean, if they have more parking spaces required per seat, that would be the other, that would be the other side of the coin, right? Would be, they would need to find more parking somewhere to be conforming, and it doesn't exist, right?
Correct. The majority of that is within the parking district.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just want to follow up on that for a second because I was a bit confused when you look at page three of staff's comment, when they say, middle of the page, "Separate bar is defined as any counter within a restaurant that serves alcoholic beverages with or without meals." This definition does not include service bars, and then if you go to Exhibit 16, and you go to page three, paragraph three, if I can find it, it is defined differently, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding it, but it is defined as having a physical separation. I'm not finding that definition, but perhaps they recall it. It is defined as having a physical separation from the rest of the restaurant. So are these two conflicting definitions, or are they for different applications?
Staff provided you potential wording that you could use within a recommendation to the town council if you chose to proceed with that. Staff maintained the same language as the original document that was presented to you last time, with the suggestion that that's what be retained, but again, we did provide the language that we believed reflected the discussion of the commission at the last meeting, and that's what's included in your report.
And just further to that issue, on page two of the October 9th report, we talk about intensification of use because at the last meeting, we raised the possibility that alcohol and/or entertainment, particularly in after-hours, that being 10 o'clock, might have an impact on traffic and parking. And I guess I'm curious if, well, we don't know that. I don't know that anybody's studied that. But if it did have an impact on parking or traffic, or if it appeared that it might, wouldn't that impact SEQA? I.e., at the moment, we're not doing any kind of environmental quality analysis, and yet the issue came up, well, if you add bars and/or entertainment, and you go later than you would otherwise go, maybe that'll have an impact. And what you've just told Commissioner Bujoir is if you were to change, apparently, the definition of a bar, you might suddenly have less parking than you need, both of which, all three of these matters would, in my judgment, trigger at least environmental quality analysis to determine which of the three levels you might have to pursue. So I'm wondering what staff thinks about that.
So we've got three issues, it sounds like, that we're talking about. The traffic, the town has specific thresholds that we monitor for SEQA, and those specific thresholds are the AM and PM peak hour trips. And so, those-
We discussed that, as staff recall, and what we said was, that's fine as long as we don't give everybody a bar or have entertainment. The town has a definition which may not fit the new ordinance. So if under the town's definition, we assume that every restaurant in town isn't going to have a bar, which they tend to do anyway, and if we assume for the moment, we don't know exactly what a bar is, because I don't know any restaurants in town, maybe there's one or two, that has a physical barrier with a clear bar, it just seems to me to have a definition that doesn't fit the facts allows you to get around SEQA, but it makes little sense. So I'm not sure I want to hear about what the definition says. What I want to know is, do we know whether changing this would have an impact on traffic in town and/or parking in town, or do we simply look to a rule of thumb that says you count the seats, and that's the answer?
That is the answer the town has historically used. What I would suggest, obviously, there was a lot of discussion about this topic at the previous meeting as well as this meeting. Forbidden minutes will be forwarded. I would also suggest that you explicitly, in any recommendation that you may make this evening, should that happen, that you ask that the council make sure that they consider that impact, and staff can provide additional information to them.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Smith.
Okay, I want to follow up on the intensification and parking question just for a moment. Okay, I want to follow up on the intensification and parking question just for a moment. So on Page 2 in the remarks under intensification of use, it's very clearly stated, the town has no codes or policies which regulate intensification based on the potential occupancy of a tenant space, so, and we've gotten the explanation because it's geared to tables or seats, I'm sorry, seats rather than tables. Is there, for every business, does either the fire department, police department, or the town give a maximum occupancy load for the business?
Yes, the fire department has maximum occupancy for each tenant space for different use categories.
So if a, we were talking last time about stand-up patrons versus those that sit down. So we could then write something in terms of intensification, if we expect the maximum load of the business occupancy load to be reached, that they need X parking, could we not do that?
You could recommend that to the town council, it would require modifying the parking requirements in the zoning code to use a different metric to base parking on. As you stated, we use seats, occupancy is going to clearly, on almost every case, I would assume in a restaurant for sure, is going to be higher than the number of seats that a CUP is approved for.
Correct. So then, that is one way we can take care of the intensification use and parking.
You could recommend that it gets to a similar situation with the parking in that you would have virtually all of the restaurants downtown would be non-conforming as the parking should a change like that occur.
All right. And then I just have two other questions, Mr. Chair, or two other comments. One is, was raised earlier, which is the enforcement issue on, which is Roman numeral 5 enforcement. We do need to be clear, who and how are these violations, sorry, which exhibit are you talking about? Exhibit 1, Exhibit 16. Page 5 enforcement. So I want to make sure that there is a methodology for tracking the calls and complaints, and it wasn't put in here, I know we discussed it the last meeting, but there wasn't, I don't see a methodology for tracking, and that was one of the things that we heard from several of the residents, is that they did call and complain, but nothing happened.
And those are the type of issues that will be addressed once the council finalizes their determination on that process?
All right. And then I just need a point of clarification. Again, I'm on Page 2 of Exhibit 16. The second, beginning the second line, "An existing establishment with a conditional use permit in good standing will continue to operate under their existing hours of operation." I thought I understood that the CUPs that have been approved over the last two years have something in them that said they are subject to any changes in policy. Did I understand that correct, Ms. Mosley?
There are several conditional use permits that specifically requested certain types of entertainment where the planning commission was, and the council were waiting for this process, and so they are subject to, at least the entertainment ordinance, I'd have to relook at those conditions as to whether they would be subject to the alcoholic beverage policy changes as well.
So then, if that, in fact, is true, then I think something should be put in here that says, because the way I read it now is that anyone that has a current CUP, it's fine the way it is, but I believe that what you are saying to me is that there are CUPs that have been issued that will be subject to the new regulations. Am I correct?
There are certain CUPs that have a condition that require compliance beyond that the existing CUP conditions would stand.
Okay, so do you think that we should add something here?
I think the key word or verbiage in that section is that the use permit has to be in good standing. So in order to remain in good standing, they have to comply with the conditions of the conditional use permit that require the entertainment permit process.
So if the commission as a whole wants to move that recommendation forward to council, then you should include that in your motion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sayak.
Two quick questions. I wanted to just continue on the discussion with the definition of the separate bar, and understanding that there are going to be several restaurants that would be non-conforming if we were to change that definition of bar. So the first question is, we've dealt with this whole non-conforming issue with several of our meetings, can staff remind me, what's the amortization for downtown again? And then the second, my concern is, without changing the definition, it sounds like we all agree that the parking has to be increased, yet we're concerned about the non-conforming uses that would occur, but I'm concerned about what will happen in the future. If we're at this point where we don't have enough parking, yet we continue to look at future applications that require significant more parking, are we doing a disservice by not changing our definitions just to make numbers count? And so, so there's, so the first question is, what really is the reality if we change the definition and we have these non-conforming uses?
Before staff responds to that, let me make a distinction. Many of the uses that you are referring to are with CUPs that run with the land that have vested rights. So that's a whole different issue than amortization. A CUP with vested rights require a due process hearing to make any modifications on those CUPs. They actually have valid rights that have to be heard before, we have a whole process in our code for that, and so that would be something that the council will need to consider. So those aren't really necessarily subject to an amortization. Generally, a CUP that's out of compliance or non-conforming then needs to be brought forward for a public hearing. Town has certain findings that they need to make before they can, in fact, do any revocation or modification of those existing uses. So I want to make sure that there's no confusion, or to clear up confusion, that amortization and vested rights on a CUP are two different animals that, I want to make sure that the commission isn't tripping over and just provide a little bit of understanding, and then staff can respond to the other issues.
Okay, so I appreciate that definition. That is very helpful. So then now I'm looking at Page 3 of the staff report where it says, if the definitions are merged, it would result in creating non-conforming parking situations that have restaurants that had separate food counters. It sounds like that is the only reason we're not, the staff didn't agree with the change in definition? And is, or are there more reasons?
The easy answer is yes, that's the main issue.
Okay. Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Proff.
I'm going to go back to one of the questions that Commissioner Sayak asked. On a separate note, back to your question on amortization, there is the code section, you've dealt with it before, it's 2910-195 regarding termination of non-conforming use status, and that does provide in Section A4 that non-residential uses in the downtown, which would otherwise be non-conforming due to zone changes and ordinance amendments which occurred after July 1, 1982, are in the category that they continue interminably so long as they conform to the other requirements of this section.
Okay, so just if I may, Chair, and this is my last point on this, if we were to ask that the definition be as we defined it in our last meeting, it sounds like the parking situation would only apply then to future applications. Is that correct? Instead of one per three seats, it would be one for four if we counted the, if we changed the definition of these counters?
Yeah, based on the section that the town attorney just referenced, then yes, they could continue interminably, however, if they came in for a modification, then they would have to come into compliance with that new, any new regulations, depending on the scope of what they're proposing to modify.
Okay. And to get back to the concept of existing CUPs that already have these vested rights, you can't just take their rights away without hearings and a process and a finding of why they are...
Yes, I understand that point completely. My question was specific to moving forward, if these definitions were to apply, how would this affect brand-new applications and the parking scenarios that we would apply to the brand-new applications?
And I would offer that, you know, the staff has provided a suggestion, we have the existing definition in the alcohol policy that has been brought forward, should the commission decide via majority or consensus, however that works out, to put forward the recommendation with one or the other of those, or something completely different, then that will be forwarded on to the town council.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
At our last meeting, Commissioner Smith raised an issue relating to loud music, which would, under this proposal, particularly under the definition of live entertainment, and this is Page 2, Section 3, 70.015, we talk about background music, which I think is a fairly good definition, we can understand what that is, but then we talk about live entertainment, and then we say, but live entertainment shall not include any entertainment provided solely without any human interaction, et cetera. And what I'm wondering is whether we should consider whether all forms of music that is not background music should not be a subject to some consideration as live entertainment. I asked that, I'm not making a suggestion, but, and based on what Commissioner Smith says, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, apparently she walked by a restaurant and even walking by the volume of the music, which would, under this definition, not be covered, i.e., not be live entertainment, there's no effective control except to say sound ordinance, and we don't, we're not real good with enforcing sound ordinances. So it seems to me the best way to avoid these problems is to start when you grant licenses or permits, because that makes it a lot easier. So I'm throwing out as a possibility that we consider, under that definition of live entertainment, including any music, whether it's solely with or without human interaction, that is not background music, because the other kind of music can be very offensive, and we would have, the town would have greater control. So I throw that out and as a suggestion. The other, so that's that point.
Commissioner Bujowal.
On a similar note, staying on the same page, you know, the desk item, there was something in the desk item when I was reading through that triggered something that I hadn't thought of, and that was, I had been reading all of this through my own lens of thinking of this as being entertainment inside an establishment, but perhaps, you know, someone could have entertainment outside, and to me, that elevates the level of concern. And so I was just wondering, is it, and I looked and I couldn't find it, is it explicitly stated inside versus outside anywhere? And where, could you point me to that? Because I...
Page 1 of Exhibit 15.
Yeah, yeah. We added that last time, okay. So if someone wanted to come in for a permit for an outdoor concert, we have no, like say, someone wanted a band out in Old Town on the patio in front of California Cafe, we don't have a mechanism to do that? That would just be through the special use permit, or?
Old Town currently has a CUP for outdoor entertainment with specific limitations that was done as a conditional requirement of their PD.
Okay, well, maybe another applicant, I mean, you know.
Staffing, the staff limited it to indoor based on numerous discussions from the council that they were not interested in permitting outdoor entertainment at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Talasfor.
Just to tag on to that, because I just thought of a restaurant that has a unique situation in the back patio, is enclosed in a tent, plastic tent, so with, you know, window sides. So I'm curious, would that count as indoor or would that be outdoor? And do we have to be specific with that? I mean, I don't want to nitpick, but I don't want to miss anything either.
Can't speak definitively without knowing what the original approval was and how that's defined within that conditional use permit, but generally, I would say that is outdoor. If it's not within the brick and mortar foundation of the building, then it would be outdoor.
Okay, is that somewhere in this ordinance about brick and mortar of the building? Maybe we need to add that. Anyway, I have another, can I continue? So at one of our last meetings, someone brought this up, and we never did discuss it, and I have been thinking about it since then, and that is, how, or is any thought given to the consideration of the concert, of the concentration of these permits now for live entertainment in our downtown area? And when I, the reason I'm concerned about that, I guess, well, I am concerned, is that if we have three restaurants in a row, do they all have, I mean, all of them having indoor music at the same time could create a noise impact? If, I mean, if we can hear it as we walk by, you know, three restaurants in a row, so has the town, or should we be thinking about how we can create a template to, to, I don't even know what I'm saying, a pilot program, some of this, or how do we control that?
That's within your purview to make, within your recommendation to the town council? Staff did not pursue that direction, it was discussed at previous study sessions with the council, and staff did not receive any direction in regards to that.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
One other item, just by way of bringing it again to the council's attention, if we look at the policy regulating establishments that serve alcoholic beverages, which is Exhibit 16, and we look at 2.2, it says, "The town shall continue to strongly discourage applications for entertainment establishments serving alcoholic beverages." But then when you go to 3, it says, "Entertainment in association with an eating and/or drinking establishment may be allowed if, or subject to standards and a permit process specified in Article 7." When you read all this, on one hand, it may be strongly discouraged, but on the other hand, here's how you do it. It's like we can't make up our mind, because if you're going to strongly discourage something, I'm not sure the next sentence ought to say, but if you want to do it, here's how you do it. So I'm not, I think we have a, we haven't decided, we being the town, what we really want, and I'm sure that the council can do that, and maybe we don't want to strongly discourage, but to say it, the council is very smart and they can figure out how one strongly discourages. They don't want it to strongly discourage, that's easy too. So I simply call their attention at the moment. You would not know that the town continues to strongly discourage by one, the way we do things, and two, the way this is drafted.
Are you, sorry, I wasn't sure if that was a question. So item number two on that page was specifically requested to be re-included from the planning commission at the last meeting, and the reason for that was that it actually talks about entertainment establishments, not restaurants with entertainment. So it goes back to the primary use of the, of the business.
Do we have a entertainment establishment that doesn't serve food?
The entertainment ordinance currently is only for entertainment as an ancillary use, not for a primary use.
So, I don't understand your comment then. If it has to... If it has to include food, then it's more than an entertainment establishment, it is a bar or some other place, serving alcohol and food, which also has entertainment, correct?
Give you an example, let's say you, there's a entertainment use that comes up downtown, and that's their primary use, and it's allowed as a retail use, and they wanted to do alcohol service as part of that, this would discourage that. The intent of this was to allow entertainment uses in combination with other primary uses. I'll give you an example, somebody had a gallery, and they wanted to have beyond background music, they wanted to have performers there, this would allow that, this permitting process would allow that entertainment use as an ancillary use, that primary gallery use, that's what the intent of the ordinance was. I think there's, it's semantics, there's two different things there, there's an entertainment establishment whose primary purpose is entertainment, and then there's an entertainment use in conjunction with whatever the other primary use of the property.
So the gallery could sell paintings, for example, and serve alcohol, and not have to serve food, is that what you're saying?
This was specific to entertainment, not alcohol.
I'm asking you a question, as your understanding of what we're drafting, is it conceivable, you have to get the permission, to have something like a gallery that serves liquor, but does not provide food when it serves liquor?
My understanding, that would probably require a conditional use permit.
If that's the case, why do we have it here?
So the trigger here would be the service of alcohol, so in that context, this document would strongly discourage that type of use.
But paragraph three, then, oh, I see, so you're saying, I mean, this is a new concept to me, so part of this is, if you don't want to serve food, and it's an ancillary use, you have to get a CUP. Is that what this says? I certainly missed it.
Any form of alcohol service does require a CUP.
So if we said, "The town shall continue to require a conditional use permit for an application for entertainment establishments wish, wish to serve alcohol beverages," would that be better than strongly discouraging? It would, I mean, it's not, it does not jump out at you that what you're really saying here is, oh, you got to get a CUP?
Based on the discussion at the last planning commission meeting, the commissioners desired for that language to be retained.
Well, I, speaking only as this commissioner, it has never been clear to me what you're saying tonight, and I am, you've told me that if I had a gallery, and I wanted to serve liquor, let's say wine or something, but I didn't want to serve food, then I have to have a conditional use permit, is that right?
Correct.
Then perhaps we should say that here, instead of merely strongly discouraging, we're really, if we're going to strongly discourage it, and we are going to require a conditional use permit, what does that mean? Go ahead and try to get a conditional use permit, but we're going to strongly discourage it?
I think it provides language that allows the decision-makers, in that case, would ultimately be the town council, to look to that policy, look at the merits of the application, and determine, determine whether or not it was appropriate. Obviously, as we said before, all of these recommendations we will forward on to the town council, and this language is in the current policy.
Where do we define an entertainment establishment? I don't think it's there.
We believe, we believe it's in the, in the definition section, currently as amusements, but-
I would suggest to you that therefore, that it's fairly clear to me that this draft could use some improvement by referring us to where, we have some definitions here. What we don't have is the definition of an entertainment establishment, and we don't have any clue that you have to get a conditional use permit. Now, that should not be controversial, because you're telling me it exists, and I'm suggesting you, from a drafting standpoint, it would be very helpful to say, entertainment establishment as defined in section whatever it is, which requires a conditional use permit, is strongly discouraged, or something like that. Because, I mean, I found this very confusing, and that may simply be me, but I call it to your attention.
So may I ask Commissioner O'Donnell a question about the concern? So when I read the purpose statement of the alcohol policy, it concludes by saying the deciding body may approve a conditional use permit to serve alcoholic beverages, et cetera, et cetera, based on the merits of the application. If I read the two paragraphs before that, it doesn't mention conditional, it talks about what the purpose of this is, would it be better to be explicit in that last sentence about, in order, without trying to word it, but in order to serve alcoholic beverages in an establishment, one must, that's, that right, or whatever ability is granted by a conditional use permit, be clear about that, and then say, and when one is applying for a conditional use permit, it may be granted, subject to what follows?
I would respond by saying, yes, if we are saying that to serve liquor under all circumstances requires a conditional use permit, then I think that's, that's correct. But I still then continue to find, when we talked about strongly discouraged versus discouraged, that's somewhat semantic, we're still, whether we said the original draft or this draft, is to discourage. If you tell somebody you have to get a conditional use permit, you have to make certain findings that we know about, one of which is the public benefit. It isn't clear to me, then, I think your suggestion to the chair is helpful. Then I think we simply have to determine, if we require a conditional use permit, must, should we also say, and oh, by the way, even if you seek that conditional use permit, keep in mind that we strongly discourage that, and indeed, that may be our policy. But I just want to be clear that it is, so one way to do this would be to follow the chair's recommendation, to amend the third paragraph of paragraph one, to make it clear that a conditional use permit is required for any service of alcoholic beverage, if that's in fact the law. And then I'm, I remain confused by the contrast between paragraphs two and three of Roman two, they just seem to be inconsistent. And as I've said before, I think in paragraph three, on subparagra, Roman three, the separate bar thing, I assume moving forward, and this, this policy is only going to move forward, it is not moving backwards, if it's truly our goal, that if we have a bar at a restaurant, it must be separated by a physical barrier, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that's what we want to do. So that's, yeah, thank you.
I guess another question for Commissioner O'Donnell. Would it be better to move whatever language is in one and two, to one and two, that's kind of somewhat declaring the intent, into the purpose section, so that one is clearer about, I haven't figured out whether that's a good strategy or not?
Well, it's very confusing. Purpose says that this applies to commercial establishments. We don't define entertainment establishments, but if we assume for the moment that it's a commercial establishment, then it fits. If we don't assume that, and since I don't have the definition before me, and I don't know the definition, but I'm assured that it exists somewhere, we at least ought to reference it. So if we determine, when somebody finds it, that a entertainment establishment indeed is a commercial establishment, then the purpose would cover that. Then if somewhere in here, it can be a limiting thing, the purpose is subject, of course, to the requirement that all commercial establishments, including entertainment, requires a conditional use permit, then that would be, to my mind, clear to the public, and would certainly be clear to this commissioner, and right now, it's not. So is that responsive to the chair's point?
I was just, I was thinking out loud, I was trying to figure out, so the second, the first sentence of the second paragraph with purpose says, "The service of alcoholic beverages with or without meals past ten o'clock is a discretionary privilege to be determined on a case-by-case basis." So potentially, I wonder, is, is the intent of two-one and two-two to make the service of alcoholic beverages a discretionary privilege, because we're discouraging it strongly?
If, if they require a use permit, if a conditional use permit is required before ten o'clock, or after ten o'clock, which is what we've just said, one wonders why this whole thing is here. You know, you'd have a very easy policy, which is, oh, by the way, on your way to getting a conditional use permit, keep in mind that we discourage what you're going to seek. And then we can also get into entertainment, very, very confusing. So if we, if it's truly a conditional use permit, then we know that the council has the right to condition a conditional use permit all kinds of ways, including numbers, and hours, and all that stuff. So these things are all very nice, but I'm not quite sure, well, I suppose if we say in determining the issuance of a conditional use permit, the council is going to take these things into consideration.
And I think if you look at the last little sentence of the purpose, it speaks to, "The deciding body may approve a conditional use permit to serve alcoholic beverages based on the merits of the application and subject to the following requirements."
But it doesn't say prior to that, you have to get a conditional use permit, it does say, if the conditional, if a conditional use permit is to be issued, less and so. But if the fact of the matter is, a conditional use permit must be obtained, then you can go on and say, and they may do less and so. But apparently nowhere in here does it say, it must be obtained. So may is not as good as must.
Let me, the staff just reminded the chair that we're in a period of questions of the staff before the public portion of the public hearing, so while it's quite enjoyable always to have a discussion with Commissioner O'Donnell, I think we should focus on where we are in the meeting at the moment, so the, the chair appreciates the guidance of the staff. So are there any other specific questions of the staff at this point in time, before we then provide an opportunity for the public portion of the public hearing? Commissioner Smith?
I just have a quick question, which actually may come up in the public portion anyway. For the live entertainment permits, I know, Mr. O'Donnell, you one time said the noise ordinance would be in effect, no matter what, so for a major permit, according to page six, a, a noise analysis needs to be done, but can you just tell me how, how is, how is a noise analysis done when a business hasn't opened? And so I'm just thinking about my experience with this particular eating establishment and the noise.
So, so as part of the application process, the intent of staff was to require the applicant to provide a noise study, which would document the existing noise level within a particular area. We'd also look to the applicant to describe the proposed use, and we would ask the applicant if their similar uses or examples, and the noise study would try to document what those similar type of uses would be, and would try to make an approximation of that use, and analyze that as part of the study. And that would be brought forward as part of the, the application and development review process to determine limitations or conditions that could be imposed, or whether or not the use would even be acceptable and be permitted.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Follow-up on that, does that also include the non-human use of noise?
I believe those would be included as part of the background, so what staff was intending was an applicant, let's say, for a business downtown, what the noise study would document would be the noise level during different parts of day, of the day that they would be proposing to operate that use, they document what the background noise would be, and then would make approximations.
So if I want to own a restaurant, and I come in and give you all the details about my restaurant, then I open for business and turn on the iPod, I violated something?
If it were interior, and it did not exceed the noise ordinance of the town, you probably wouldn't have any issues, unless there were limitations placed as part of the entertainment permit.
So what you just said, then, wouldn't apply? In other words, you wouldn't do a study, because you wouldn't know about it, and I wouldn't violate any law by using it? Okay?
Are there other questions of the staff at this time? Saying none, we will open the public portion of the public hearing, and invite members of the public to address the commission on the issues before us. We don't have any speaker cards, we have people in the audience, is there anyone who would like to speak? We would invite you to come forward.
Larry Arzey, I live here in town. Thank you all for your due diligence, you've done a great job on this, there's nothing I have to give for input. What I'm up here tonight for is to, to ask staff to please answer Mrs. Margaret Smith's question better. She asked, in my mind, I heard, isn't it true that previous people who received use permits, CUPs, for serving liquor, were required to adhere to any, the new alcohol beverage policy you're making now? Staff never said, "That's correct, Mrs. Smith." I would like them to, to respond with either, "Yes, you're correct," or have Mrs. Smith rephrase her question to staff, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arzey. Anyone else who would like to address the commission? For the record, we need your name and address.
Lee Quintana, but the clock is going. I've only read through this very fast, and I did find it confusing, but I have to agree with practically everything that Commissioner O'Donnell said. What seems, what question seems to come up over and over again is, what's the difference between occupancy load and table load, and how does that affect parking? How the conditional use permits that were conditionally approved, how do they fit into these policies, entertainment or alcohol? And it seems to me it would be very helpful to be able to get answers to those questions when looking at the overall, particularly the question of, of the effect on parking, and, and how the, the permits that were approved conditionally fit into this. I mean, it almost seemed at, at the time, that, at least in my mind, that, yeah, you can put that condition in, but it seemed like it was a precursor of saying, we're going to, we're going to make sure that these new policies are crafted to ensure that those uses can continue. My question is, if they don't, what's the process now? And in, in terms of asking about the occupancy load versus tables, pick, you know, five restaurants or something, or five entertainment venues or something, make some kind of comparison, because I think you can't make a comparison, I think they acquire so many parking spaces for a theater, per number of seats, that would be fairly equivalent. And I keep forgetting one thing, and I still don't, I didn't write it down, and I can't remember it, but it's a very confusing ordinance, and I think, if possible, it should be simplified so it's understandable, if we can't understand it now, it's probably not going to be interpreted the same way tomorrow, or a month from then, or a month from then.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Other members of the public who are present who would like to speak? Could we also get everybody who has spoken to fill out a speaker's card and give it to the staff, just so we can do that for the record?
Hi, Maria Risto, eighty-five Broadway. First of all, I just want to re-
First of all, I just want to really thank the planning commission. It's clear to me from your comments that you're making that you've read the letters that the neighbors have written. You understand the concerns that the residences have. Every one of us who wrote letters enjoy being downtown. We patronize the businesses downtown. But I think, listening to the questions that have been asked, it feels to me like to staff, this whole policy exists on paper, and I don't want to question, well, I would like to question, do you go downtown? I mean, it sounds like sometimes when you're answering the questions, you have not been in the restaurants, you have not seen these businesses, you don't experience what's really happening. And my concern is that this policy is going to be a big colossal mistake if it's so confusing that we don't understand it right now. The residents aren't going to understand it, the businesses aren't going to understand it, and I don't understand how it's going to be implemented, enforced, or carried out. And I think this has to be done right. I think, I know that it wants to be done this year, but I think we need to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what all the problems are. And we do have standalone bars. They may not have a physical barrier, but if you walk by several establishments after nine-thirty at night, everybody's at the bar. I've been there. I have not been offered food. Okay? So if we're afraid to define something for what it is, if it's quacking like a duck and looking like a duck, but we're not going to call it a duck because now we have to deal with a duck, it's ridiculous. So please take that into account, and thank you for all your good questions.
Thank you. Other members of the public who would like to address the commission? Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close the public portion of the public hearing, and I will turn to fellow commissioners for comments, questions, potential motion. Commissioner Smith?
I have a question of staff about parking, as I think about it. I know there was, there was comments last time, and I believe in the document, that bars and restaurants, or other retail establishments, I'm talking about in the downtown area, usually after nine o'clock they're closed, and so more, more parking becomes available, no matter what. So then how is the parking calculated? The question I'm asking, I'll just give you an example. If during the day, three parking spots are needed for every one table, let's say, then in the evening, if we have four-hundred-and-ninety-seven parking spaces available in the downtown, then they would always comply with a parking requirement. Is that correct? Am I interpreting that? Or is it within a certain circumference or square feet of that establishment? There has to be the parking spots available.
So the parking specifically in the downtown has two components. Some, very few, but some have onsite parking, and others have credits in the parking district. They are not tied specifically to geographic area. When that parking district was set up, they were, I think, linked to the closer parking lots. But those parking spaces are just allocated to that parcel, and so the uses in there are gauged against what parking credits they have versus the uses that are either in there or are being proposed.
So a business that was at one time one retail building, and now has five tenants in it, but the building owner has the parking credits, or the business, the businesses within it have the parking credits?
They're, they are tied to the property owner.
To the property owner.
And then they are aligned to make sure that they don't provide uses, or seats in a restaurant's case, that exceed that allocation.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Birch?
I'm going to ask a question, actually, of my fellow commissioners. I know, in reading this, I'll be very honest, I found so much of it very confusing, and the longer I listen, I realize I'm not alone in this. I know in the past I have heard that when things like this come up, and there's separate groups providing separate input, and then we have a meeting, and you've changed something, and you've worked so hard on it, and then we're finding questions, and you have to go back to the drawing board. There's been study sessions where perhaps the commission, council, staff gets together and goes through these documents, and we take the time to go through each of these points, and we hammer it out in one session, and then come back to look at it. Is that at all, anything anyone else would be interested in or find applicable in this situation to maybe make this happen in the timeline? I know you're looking for it in, but address everybody's issues?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I think that's a good suggestion. It's not one that I find compelling, but it might be the right thing to do. The reason I say not compelling is, a lot of things we're struggling with really are going to have to be decided by the council. We can make suggestions all day long, but the final analysis, some of our questions, the reason we don't know the answer to them is because we're looking for guidance, and we've, I don't, won't kill the lily, we've been looking for guidance from the council on this. Council has said, "Fine, draft something, let's look at it, and we'll get there." We've now gone through this a number of times, and I agree with you. I, from a lawyer's standpoint, it could use a lot of improvement. But a lawyer wouldn't be able to draft it, because a lawyer would say, "What do you want? You just can't draft something out of your head. You got to say, 'What does my client want?'" And I'm at the point now, I'm not crystal clear what the council wants on some of these key items, but yes, I think, if we, if this were our drafting exercise, we could take what we've got and make it a lot clearer. But I'm not sure we would be getting to the issues that I'd sure like to find out what the council's positioned on. So I guess the question really is, would we benefit by further study as opposed to saying, "Here's the best we can do so far, send it to the council and let them give us..." If they want to have more work done, that's fine, but maybe they could share with us some answers to the questions we've raised, for example, this evening. So that's just, that's my thought.
Commissioner Ujwa?
I agree. I think it would, it would probably be a beneficial meeting, but after hearing Commissioner O'Donnell's comments, I tend to agree, but I think we should, I think we should tell them what we want and what we think. If we can come to consensus on a majority of these things, we tell them, "This is, this is how we think." You know, we're the ones that hear, we probably hear more of these, well, they all have to go to council if it's alcohol, but, you know, we've been struggling with these for a while. I think we, I think they want our input. So we tell them what we want, and they can either agree or poke holes in it, and, and we go from there. But, and I don't even know if we can come up with consensus among ourselves, but I think, I think that's what I think we should strive to do, is tell them how we think it should look.
Simply following up on that.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
One thing we could do is do that. One doesn't have to draft a document to say, "Here's how we feel on points one through six," because we wrestled this evening with that. And it would be, if I were on the council, I think I might find it helpful to say, "This is what the planning commission thinks about these issues." I wouldn't argue about, "Did they use the right language, tune that?" If we could say, "This is what we feel about these issues," and I think we could do that, and I think we would at least get a consensus. We could stop fooling around with redrafting this document and just do that, and I think we'd get somewhere. And we might be able to do that even yet this evening. So if we could, for example, I'm going to make this suggestion to the chair, if without discussing it at the moment, if people would say, "Let's talk about," or let's, yeah, "Let's make a recommendation, sorry, this issue, this issue." If we could identify the issues, and I only mean important issues. I'm thinking of a list of anywhere from five to 10 things that we might get some suggestions on. So it would be a much more defined term. Maybe that's wrong, but that strikes me as perhaps a useful document.
Commissioner Sayad?
Okay. On that note, I'm going to go ahead and start. There are three things that I have found that is very important for me that requires further clarification. And not worrying about the wordsmithing or how to proceed, but this is what I feel needs further clarification, and hopefully we can get some consensus on. I would like a definition page of, of what a entertainment establishment is, what a restaurant is, what is the separate bar issue. I think that needs definition. And one of the things that we never really clarified in this, and perhaps it wasn't part of the purview, but I'm, I'm thinking back on all the previous applications that have come before us that either had conditional approvals or had some discrepancy on our part. But one of the things that I always came back to that needed clarification was the definition of a restaurant versus a bar, particularly when it came into displacing retail. There was always that definition of, "Well, it serves something." And we never really clarified, 50% of sales were retailed, 60%? And to this day, that was never clarified here, and I don't know if that was with, if that's no longer in this purview. But I can just see an issue coming forward if an application came forward. I still don't have that clarification on, on what's a restaurant versus, versus a wine bar, a retail wine bar, or some of these other wine bars that have come forward that the way I interpret should not have been approved. So that's one in terms of definitions. The second is enforcement. I understand that there's a separate process, but I really would like a step-by-step explanation on what someone ought to do if they have a complaint. And I appreciate the language clarification that's in here that, I wish I went to the right page, but basically that if it involved alcohol, and it came to the attention of the community development director, that that person is now responsible for looking into whether there's a CUP violation. I like that, but I would like it very clear, who does a resident call? And how much time should they expect an issue to be resolved or to be acknowledged? And then I do believe the third issue for me is parking. I'm still unclear how we are allocating parking spaces, if, if that really is a reality check, or if that's more because that's how we've always done it, and we don't have enough parking. And maybe that's just because I don't understand the parking district, and, and that's something that I need to stay further. But my concern is, if you walk into most restaurants now, it is no longer the occupancy of who is sitting down on a chair, but who is really standing around a bar or counter-sized tables. I mean, you, even though there's two chairs, you could see six people. So it really gets into, what type of parking are we providing for those patrons? And do we have enough? And if we don't have enough, let's just acknowledge it. And so that future applications, when we look at impacts, we acknowledge, we have a parking problem. That may impact future applications, but at least we're saying what the problems are upfront. So those are my three issues. I look to my commissioners how we can solve them, but I hope that we can try and come to some consensus on, on what moves forward.
May I ask Commissioner Sayad for a clarification? If I followed everything that you brought up, all of your comments pertain to the alcohol beverage policy, is that correct?
Correct. But I guess what I would, how I would relay it to the entertainment is, the intensification does, there's some overlap there, because the scenario that, the example I gave of six patrons standing around a table, if there's entertainment, they're more likely to stay longer. And so how does that affect the parking? So there is some overlap there.
Commissioner Ujwa?
Thank you, Commissioner Sayad. I think that's a great start. I would like to add a couple things. One, when we're talking about definitions, I think for the live entertainment policy, and as ridiculous as this sounds, I do think we need to define indoors, and that it does not include decks, awnings, balconies, et cetera. I think we need to be explicit about that. There's a lot of opportunities in downtown for that indoor entertainment to creep out of doors pretty easily, so I think we need to be explicit. You mentioned separate bar, but did you not say which definition you wanted to use? I personally could not support the way it is currently written. I think the food counter definition needs to go, and that we need to use the alternate definition, definition of separate bar. I think if it creates non-conforming parking situations, so be it. I think it's, it's a realistic reflection of what's happening downtown, and so I would not support anything that does not use the alternate definition of separate bar, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
At the moment, since we've gotten, I think, some very good suggestions, I just want to add one, which is the intensification thing. When you drive downtown at night, I mean, 11:00, 11:30, we suddenly are inundated with taxicabs. What a surprise. I don't know if we know what happens when you have late-night entertainment, alcohol sales, bars, restaurants that act as bars. So I, I think we ought to have, we ought to consider intensification before we grant either a conditional use permit or something less than initial use permit for a use which will go later than usual or will be different than usual. In other words, if we say to a restaurant, "Yes, you can have liquor," which, as far as I'm concerned, is fine, but if now that means they're going to go later in the evening because people will have an after-dinner drink or whatever they're going to have, I, I just think the town ought to know, is that having any impact on parking and/or traffic? And, you know, you could put that in the ordinance by saying, "When you get such a request, a determination should be made as to whether it will have an impact on traffic or parking." And I don't believe that our road answer of count the tables or count the chairs is the answer. We're doing something different, and I think it ought to be a more intelligent answer. And it's absolutely true that if you go to a successful restaurant with a 50-foot bar that is four-deep, which means the business is doing real well, God bless them. But we don't take that into account at all when it comes to traffic, or parking, or anything else. So I think, I think this ordinance should at least take it into consideration. I'm not saying we have to turn anything down, but we ought to take it into consideration. So I think intensification should be considered in the ordinance.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I have one suggestion in terms of the intensification, and that is the, the point that I raised, which is, perhaps when we're looking at a major permit, at least, we could look at the maximum occupancy load for a business rather than counting the seats. So that might be a way in which we can get a better handle on that intensification issue. The second thing that I want to comment on, we have not talked about, is that I would like to urge the council to have an enforcement officer in the evening, because this is, what we keep hearing, is that there is no one around, yes, you can complain to the police, it is not high on their list, but we don't have a code enforcement officer in the evening, so therefore no one is ever witnessing the code violations. So those are the two things that I'd like to have covered. Thank you.
Could I ask Commissioner Smith a question? I'm trying to track and keep track of what we're doing. So with respect to if one were going to, so I was trying to understand what your intent by using maximum load occupancy is, to use that as the standard to set parking requirements?
For a major permit, and I'm, I can refer back to page two of the remarks where intensification of use, where the staff has stated the town has no codes or policies which regulate intensification of use and/or parking based on the potential occupancy of a tenant's space. So what I'm trying to address is a way in which it's not just the seats in the restaurant, it's whatever, however the maximum occupancy load for that space has been set, which I understand from my questioning, is different than the seats.
Let me ask a follow-up question. I'm just trying to be sure, clarify, and we provide some useful direction with, with enough specificity without, without running them. So, Vice Chair Smith, so would you want to then apply the max, maximum occupancy load at all times for determining the parking requirements if I had one of these two types of permits? Or only in a situation where it, where it was beyond the normal hours that are provided by the policy?
Well, I can see it as either or. I can see that... I can see that if I understand not only the testimony of the public, but my fellow commissioners, what we are saying is that the parking, intensification of parking issue is one that has not been fully addressed yet. So I just came up with a suggestion for how to do that, but I did apply it to the major permits, that is, the after-10:00 PM permit. So that was my qualifier.
Commissioner Tauschwar.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly agree with what I've heard here tonight. This has been confusing for me, and I think I ended up with the question that Commissioner O'Donnell asked, you know, what do we want? Because I wasn't clear after I read this, unfortunately. But to my point about the concentration of these permits in an area and the intensification that will come with it, I'm wondering if there needs to be created an impact map that can go along with the decision-making so that we understand if, you know, five entertainment establishments are, you know, allowed in restaurants and bars, what we can expect as far as noise, traffic, and anything else. Now, is that something that would happen anyway? Maybe I should ask that question.
Well, if that was a question, one way to treat it would be like when you see a formula retail business, we have the map of the downtown, it would just be the greater downtown and show entertainment.
And its impacts and the potential impacts, I think, would be important in decision-making as we go forward with this policy. You know, I don't know whether this policy is going to help us or hurt us or make things more complex. So I'm just trying to get more information to the deciding body, whoever that is. That's my suggestion.
Okay, I'm going to take a whirl at something for a moment to see. And I have-
Do you want staff to read back what we think we heard?
Sure.
Do you want to do it, or do you want me to start? I'll start, and then I'll ask the planners to finish up. And then also, we're going to ask for some areas of clarification that were raised earlier to see if you want those comments included as well. We heard that initially you want to include a definitions section that includes definitions for entertainment establishment, restaurant, separate bar, define what indoors is, and that it does not include decks, patios, et cetera. Heard that the commission wants clarification to explain the difference between restaurants and retail use and retail and wine bars. On the enforcement issue, there were several issues, how to submit a complaint, what the complaint process is, when it gets referred to community development for violations of a CUP, who responds, who tracks the complaints, and recommend to council that as part of their enforcement process, that in the evening, code enforcement officer is available. And just for clarification, is that evenings, all evenings are just weekends or certain days?
My sense of the commission would be for all days of the week when there are permits that would potentially contribute to that problem.
Okay. And on parking, we heard-
We may have minority opinions, or I might be at a minority opinion.
Let me just say this, that in the event that that is a financial issue, which I believe it probably would be, at a minimum, I think if there is a complaint, if we had follow-up, that would mean that someone would not be committed five, seven days a week, whatever it is. But if you had follow-up, that would be something. So I'm not taking away from the suggestion, but I'm saying a fallback is if somebody's complaining about something, obviously, it's not a one-time thing. And if that's the allegation, then if we could simply respond to that, it would be one, cheaper, but two, it would be effective.
Okay, and incorporating that under the enforcement issue, the other bullet would be to require some sort of follow-up process and explain what that timeliness is and how that happens to the community. On parking, we heard that the commission is recommending to council that there needs to be clarity on the parking as to whether or not parking is based on seats or occupancy. There was a recommendation that you use alternative definition of the separate bar and eliminate the definition for the food counter. That the council should address the intensification of uses such as entertainment or entertainment and alcohol as it may impact, have impacts on parking and traffic. There was a suggestion that that may require additional studies or information provided to the council to make that determination. And with respect to major permits, recommendation is to look at the maximum occupancy and not seats as a standard for the parking requirements and to address concentration of permits, creating an impact map.
Is that reasonable?
Okay. And could we ask for a couple of areas of clarification? There was an earlier-
Before you do that, I'd like to, as an individual member of the commission, say, while, so the policies use commercial establishments, and if I, my recollection is correct, commercial establishments are then defined in the code, so they're defined. It might be, my assumption is that the intent of the council is not to permit either live entertainment or alcoholic beverage service in all kinds of commercial establishments. So it might be, and to get at the question of where they're encouraged or discouraged, if there are kinds of commercial establishments, that is, the intent of the council never to permit either alcoholic beverage service, either say that, or say that, or name the kinds of commercial establishments where it's possible to get a permit. I'm not, you know, so we used a gallery example, I could envision the potential, then one wouldn't want to allow alcoholic beverage service in a gallery, just categorically. One might not want to, you know, so it might be, in terms of clarifying the, where and what types of establishments and/or what kinds of circumstances, it might be helpful to call those out with some specificity.
So earlier in the discussion, before everybody went through their list, there were a couple of other issues that came up that we want to know whether or not that that's a consensus of the commission to pass on to the council. And one of them is the discussion about including references and more information to council about the CUPs that were issued in the past three years, and which one of those, which of those CUPs or what in provisions of those CUPs might be applicable to the new policies. The other, one of the other issues was an early issue that Commissioner O'Donnell raised, specifically excluded from live entertainment is music or entertainment without any human interaction or control of any radio, television, video, music, recording device, digital recording jukebox, and audience, for the benefit of the audience of the patron, and a discussion of what was background music versus music that was played on an iPod or some other instrument. And so maybe if commission could clarify whether or not that there's a recommendation that you want to pass along as to whether or not those things are excluded from live entertainment. We heard that some of you may want to include those.
Commissioner Boujou.
I think you bring up a real issue, but I don't know that this is necessarily the place. I think it starts to muddy the waters as to what we're doing when you start. We have a live entertainment policy, and then we'll start creeping into non-live entertainment. I think, I know that noise ordinance isn't always adhered to, but I would be concerned about, that seems like a slippery slope of getting away from what I understood our intent to be.
The only reason I'm raising it here is we have a definition which would preclude consideration of that. And I'm simply saying, when one considers entertainment, usually, the public is concerned about entertainment other than on moral grounds, which is not real popular, on noise grounds. So we say, you can't do all these things, but if you don't have human intervention, go to it. I'm just saying, I think that definition may be too broad, and I do think it fits here because we went out of our way, as I recall, they have four or five lines telling us what's not included in this, and I don't know why we're doing that. So I know Commissioner Smith, who was going to say something, and I'll defer to her to say it, I personally think we ought not to give a pass in this ordinance on things simply because there's no human direct congenial intervention.
I believe that the issue that I raised was a CUP that came before us where they wanted a jack in order to put in amplifiers when they wanted to entertain in the restaurant. And so my concept was when I read this, except when something doesn't require human intervention, and I realized, of course, you can have your iPod, iPad, just plug it into the wall and you, you know, the room can rock. So is that live entertainment, or is that just loud music? So I, you know, does it need to be here at this moment? No, I believe that, or when you stated it would be more of a noise ordinance issue, and I was comfortable with that. So I don't know that it needs to be raised here.
I guess I would offer, I agree, I think, with the sense of what Commissioner Boujou was attempting to say. So to me, live entertainment is live entertainment. And if we don't, if we would like to, I might suggest if we would like to regulate those kinds of music or noise generating entertainment activities that are not generated by someone who is live, that this becomes a live entertainment, without worrying about the specificity of the name, it becomes a live entertainment and music policy, that may be okay. If we feel like we need to, if we feel like we need to regulate, someone used inhuman as opposed to inhumane earlier, so, inhuman music. And so, you know, we would need to broaden it from a live entertainment to live entertainment and music, it seemed like to me.
Well, this is not a strongly-held point here, it's just that this idea of the non-human is crazy because the selection of music, the select of volume is not done automatically. So if one moment it's quiet because the staff is there, and the next moment it's loud because somebody else is there, that's human intervention. So all I'm trying to say is, if you want to rely on the noise ordinance for that, good luck. If you want at least going in saying, what is it you want to do? And if this is not the proper way to do it, fine. I just hope we have some way to do it. So I think the distinction is somewhat phony. If you have a disc jockey, he's a guy, or she's a woman, who plays music, if you have a non-disc jockey, you have somebody controlling the devices that you're using. And boy, that's pretty darn close. I mean, in both cases, you have the effect of human decisions on things like volume, music, the whole bit. To say that it's just an automatically, unless it's divine intervention, I don't know what that means.
We trust the staff will be able to sort this out better than the commission. Are there other issues that, Commissioner Boujou?
I don't know if staff was finished going through their list or not of, you said you had some additional-
We have.
Okay, so the only other one that I heard that I haven't heard since is Commissioner O'Donnell's confusion, and a lot of ours' confusion about the CUPs and strongly discouraged and that whole issue. And I think what we came to, that I thought it could be pretty easily cleared up if, on Exhibit 16, the sentence before general policy, Roman numeral two, general policy, deciding body may approve additional use permit, blah, blah, blah. I think if we add some clarity to that sentence, or even an additional sentence saying, you know, when the CUP is required for what, I think that would clarify the following section a little bit, and hopefully that would make that bit a little more clear. So that was the only thing that I heard tonight that hasn't been incorporated into the recommendations.
Can I give the staff a couple minutes, their writing, taking notes? Other issues that would be helpful to have clarification and direction? Let me ask the members of the commission a question. Would you prefer that the staff translate all of this, which we will ultimately do, into a list, and bring that list back to the commission before it's sent to the council? Are we okay trusting the staff to generate that list?
I trust the staff.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure everyone was okay with that.
Commissioner Tauschwar.
I think if what we heard back from the staff about our list, to me, sounded that they captured everything we said. So based on that, thank you. I'm sure you can spell-check and all that. You'll do a great job. Thanks.
Commissioner Smith.
So I believe we need a motion, is that correct, to move this on? And if that is the case, then I will move to, forward to the town council for recommendation of adoption, Town Code Amendment A-13-04. With the finding that the zoning ordinance amendments are consistent with the general plan and that the list of comments made by the planning commission, both this meeting and the previous meeting, will be included with that recommendation. And I believe that I have, let me be more clear then, that the finding that the town code amendments are consistent with the general plan as included in Exhibit 1, again, with the additional comments made by the planning commissioners, and that the town council adopt the amendments to the zoning regulation ordinance as outlined in Exhibit 14, and the amendments to the alcohol beverage policy as outlined in Exhibit 16, as will be, again, the comments of the commissioners added to these amendments. And so that the council takes them into consideration. That's it.
Okay, so let me, before I ask for a second, let me see if I can ask the staff to repeat the motion to us so we're sure what the motion is.
So the motion was to, is outlined on page four, and that is to make the required finding that the town code amendments are consistent with the general plan, which are outlined in Exhibit 1, which was previously submitted, and to forward a recommendation a recommendation to the town council for adoption of the amendments to the zoning regulation ordinance and the amendments to the alcohol beverage policy with the inclusion of the list that was provided by the planning commission for issues that they want to make sure are addressed.
Commissioner Bouchard.
I have a clarification on the motion from staff, actually. Mr. Paulson, when, I'm sorry, I'll let you guys, when you say including the, are you going to give them the list or are you actually going to incorporate those changes into the documents and provide them with updated and edited documents of the ordinance and the policy?
I think it will be a case by case because some of those issues we will not change. However, I think the issue specifically with the requiring, you know, those uses that require a CUP in the purpose section and other similar definition.
So it'll be a mix of both. For example, the intensification, one might be a couple sentences explaining our concern, but like the definitions and all that will be folded into the document. So it's going to be a combination.
It will be a combination. And the other thing I'd like to clarify for the record is we also need to include Exhibit 15.
So on page four, it, your motion should include that you recommend the live entertainment regulatory prop, process proposed in Exhibit 15, which is the ordinance.
What Attorney Prop said seems to be different than what I just heard. If in fact, the document we have before us with its changes, which we did not fully accept, were to go along, fine. We all know what that document is. Subject however to our comments, that's what I thought we were doing, and I thought that's what the motion is. However, to Commissioner Bouchard's question, the answer confused me because the answer is no, we're going to make some of those changes and we're also going to have the list. Well, that's not what I'm voting, that's, well, that's, that would not be what I would say, don't bring it back. And that's why I'm suggesting they don't make the changes because if they start making the changes, we ought to look at those changes. If instead they say, okay, this is a document we've all seen, and that's the documents going forward with our comments, those comments relate to that document. If they attempt to take our suggestions and change the document, then we haven't seen the document. So that, most of my understanding of the motion, I asked the maker of the motion to clarify, is that we take the existing documents, not change them, and add the list. And if that's the motion, I could support that.
Right. I would say to Mr. O'Donnell, the precise reason that I asked the staff to repeat the motion because my interpretation of the motion was what you just outlined, but we'll let the maker of the motion then clarify all of our clarification.
Commissioner O'Donnell is correct. What I thought would happen is that, or what I believed and what I moved, was that the exhibits would go forward as we see them. However, the comments of the commissioners, because we were so specific, would be included in the documents going to the town council.
When you say in the documents, you mean attached to the documents?
Yes, attached to the documents. Thank you.
Yes. Staff understands that clarification and appreciate the input.
I second the motion.
Commissioner O'Donnell seconds motion. So we now have a motion in front of us that what will go forward to the council is the proposed amendments and alcohol beverage policy as in the report tonight with a list of the issues and concerns and/or recommendations that the commission made tonight, as we just covered. Is that correct? So we have that motion, made by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Report from the Director of Community Development.
Yes, thank you. So since our last meeting, the Development Review Committee met actually yesterday and approved a house at 17059 Piant Avenue, was on a currently vacant lot. And they also approved a certificated compliance for two lots at 16235 Short Road. The council also met on Monday, and they approved the zoning code amendments for the implementation of the housing element that the planning commission recommended approval for on September 11th, as well as, they also reviewed the conditional use permit for 550 Hubble Way, which the planning commission recommended denial of on September 11th, and the council recommended denial, actually, the council denied the application and provided some direction to the applicant. Another item we just want to mention is there's a lot of vacancies for boards and commissions throughout the town, and the deadline has been extended to October 18th. So if anyone is interested in submitting an application for any of the boards or commissions, then we would welcome that. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Are there other commission matters? If not, we're adjourned.